Calling the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting on this Tuesday, April the 19th, 2022. Charlotte, may you please call the roll?
Dr. Chang.
Here.
Mr. Goldman.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Nazarella.
Present.
Ms. Pollan.
Here.
Dr. Steinberg.
Here.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson.
Here.
Student Representative Andrew Maglio.
Present.
Student Representative Avery Woods-Weber.
Here.
Thank you. Andrew, may you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We do not have a revision to the agenda order. And now we are at the time for public communications. This is an opportunity for us to hear from the public, your thoughts, your suggestions, your concerns. Each individual has three minutes to share their thoughts, and there are 21 minutes per subject matter. We ask that when you go to the podium, please share your name and your address. We certainly do ask and encourage that all comments are made in a respectful way. And be aware that we are attentively listening to you. However, it is policy that we do not respond to comments as they are being made, but we are listening to you. As you are speaking, please be mindful to Charlotte. She will hold up a yellow card when you are down to one minute left in your comments. And when your time has expired, you will see a red card. I have a list here of several names. And again, we have 21 minutes per subject matter. So if we do reach the 21-minute mark, please know that we also do offer public comments at the end of the meeting, and we certainly welcome to hear from you at that time as well. Beginning with on Jay Ostberg, I believe, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's
Hi, good evening. My name is N.J. Ostberg. I live at 70 West Beacon Street here in West Hartford. I'd like to talk just a couple of minutes about social emotional learning and CRT. I'm new here. This is my first time speaking, but I've been reading a lot of articles about both curriculum. And I'm not sure that a five-year-old can process what gender is, what pronouns should be used. I believe, as a parent and a grandparent, that social emotional learning begins at home. I believe in teaching basic information so that children will learn and thrive. I think we're getting off of that. I grew up in the '60s and the '70s, graduated high school in '78, graduated undergrad in '83, and so on. So I'm old school, and I am not an anti-gay racist, nothing. I just think we're going a little bit left of center, and I don't think it's good for the kids to be that young. I do think that, yes, there are kids at age five and six and seven perhaps that know they're gay, or that they know that they're in the wrong body. But it's up to them and their families to come to that decision, not to go sit in a classroom and be told, "Oh, Susie, it's okay if you want to be called Steve." I don't believe that that's the teacher, I don't believe that the teacher has that right, and to do this across the board. And so I'm against this curriculum, very much so. And that's all I'm doing.
Thank you. Next, we have Catherine, last initial B, Byrow.
My name is Catherine Byrow. I live at 85 Fenbrook Road. I've lived in West Hartford since I was 11 years old. I'm a Hall High grad, mother of two Hall High grads, and I just wanted to express my support for the mascot change and my support and trust in the process as it is working out, and that I think that in a town like West Hartford, where I learned, where I attended bar and bat mitzvahs and confirmations, and where I have attended brisus and I have celebrated Ramadan, that we need to provide a neutral mascot situations that people can feel that they belong and that they are not targets, and that they are able to not be stereotyped or identified as a mascot rather than as a person. And so I wrote to you before the vote, and everything I said in that letter is true, and I just want to express my continued support for the process of the mascot change. I am the mother, I have the sister of a Hall High cross-country runner, a cousin of a Conner basketball player, and the mother of a Hall High softball player. None of them feel that being a warrior or a chieftain was more important than being a good citizen and neighbor in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Addie Lorden.
Addie Lorden, 561 Park Road. In February 2021, this all started for me, questioning financial discrepancies with regard to public funds, and here I am with a few, with few answers and even more serious concerns. I was told recently to give up. It's not worth it. I'd be slandered, defamed, my family targeted, and called a political operative and much worse. That's all happened. And allegedly, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Morrow has threatened to investigate me à la A.G. Garland. I gave him the opportunity several times to refute this. His silence is deafening. And Assistant Superintendent Mr. Visinas has stated in a meeting that parents' concerns are irrelevant, our contributions insignificant, and we have no right to information on how public funds are spent, then winks at me in this very room as much as to say, "You can't touch us." This begins and ends with money. There are millions of dollars to be had in the name of equity. We all questioned the sudden resurgence and urgency with which our school team names were eradicated, names Clan Mother Sheran and others do not deem offensive or propriety to Native Americans. Mr. Chang declared the revenue of $27,000 miniscule, and this is a moral issue, but he alluded that there was more at stake. This vote had to be done and couldn't wait until June. But I see now why members of the board voted down transparency and why some members feel they need public relations experts. A vote based on Senator Kathy Austin's bill regarding tribal revenue, a bill that was not completely presented here by Chairperson Farquharson. Why the urgency? Twenty-four tennis courts in need of renovation with a hefty $3 million price tag, a supposed item in the WHPS budget, but then the state generously steps in issuing bonds to cover the cost, pushed by Austin and others in the business of monetizing our equity. Her own press secretary making the announcement. But these bonds could not be issued for existing structures, and the $3 million was approved for sports facilities. The tennis court project has not gone out to bid, and no winning bid has been made public. Senator Austin is being slated to be our new next governor by many. Who will be her lieutenant governor out of those pushing for these funds through under the umbrella of equity? I wonder, did the inner circle of the BOE, WHPS, and Town Caucus on this? Did you include the other members, the members of the opposite party, in these discussions about this sweetheart deal? $3 million is only the tip of the iceberg. Equity is worth a lot more, apparently. I question the new style of report cards and why so much space was allotted to SEL and social justice, subjects under the main subject, social studies.
Excuse me, pardon me, your time has expired.
How much is your integrity worth?
Thank you. Next, we have Anita.
Hi, Anita Rataki. I am 48 West Normandy Drive here in West Hartford, Connecticut. I am not originally from West Hartford. I'm actually originally from Philadelphia, a lovely Quaker area, city Philadelphia, meaning city of Brotherly La Philadelphia. Anyway, I am here for one reason, and that is to show that the administration of the West Hartford Public Schools have made grievous errors, and they do not give full information. On February 23rd, 2018, Tom Moore turned around when I asked him to look into something. He said, "No, I'm not going to do it." And I said, "Well, why not?" He said, "I made my decision, and I'm not going to do it." And I said, "Well, then how do I appeal your decision?" And he said, "You can't appeal my decision." Tom Moore knows, and Dr. Farquharson, you were on the Board of Ed. I went to the Office of Civil Rights, and they did investigate the situation, and that may just come up again. In October, I saw issues with the principal regarding public funds. I brought it to the attention, and interesting things occurred. But let's suffice it to say, on December 22nd, Paul Visinas, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, wrote to me, "I understand and appreciate your request. However, the audit responsibilities you described," because I was asking to look at the funds and how they were used, public funds, "are related to the PTO. They do not extend to the finances of Webster Hill or West Hartford Public Schools." Well, he was wrong. Freedom of Information Act gives us all, all of us, the right to look at how the administration uses public funds, because, as we all know, West Hartford Public Schools does not print the funds. It comes from all of our salaries. But the worst part, the worst part, is that not only did they attempt to target me and slander me with, as Tom Moore wrote, casting aspersions, but they went after my son. On March 14th, and you are well aware of it because I wrote to you, he was pulled aside for misinformation hearsay in which the other student involved said that my son was not involved in the situation. Both children, my son and the other son, they are both students of color, and the other mother is as enraged as I am. If we talk about equity and we talk about children of color, then I wonder, I want to understand why the principal is given certain rights and the curriculum specialist is given certain rights, but when my son is pulled out of the classroom, he's not allowed to speak. And you know what? He asked to go back into the classroom. Assistant Kirk Gillum Specialist did not allow him to go back. You're in executive sessions. You need to look at how the schools are being run in the schools. You need to talk to the parents.
Thank you.
Good evening. As I look around this room tonight, something is missing.
Excuse me, please pardon. Share your address.
Oh, sorry. Scott Swag, 19 Clay Bar Drive, like every other time. I look around this room, I see something is missing. I see the Board of Education, I see the superintendent, members of the community, and even the media, but I do not see Chief Richard Velkey or representatives from any of the Native American tribes in Connecticut. Where are they? Do you not care what they have to say? Esteemed Chairwoman, on April 9th, you told a former Board of Education member and trusted member of this community that if Chief Velkey contacted the board directly and requested to be added to the agenda for tonight's meeting, that you would include him. Well, on April 12th, Chief Velkey submitted that request directly to the board as you instructed. Yet, for reasons I cannot understand, on April 13th, you refused his request and instead offered him a mere three minutes to speak during public comment. Why did you go back on your word? The disrespect you and your board members show to Chief Velkey and all Native Americans in this state is absolutely shameful. You claim the decision to erase the names Warrior and Chieftain from these schools were meant to protect Native Americans under the guise of your equity and anti-racism policy, but do Native Americans need your protection from these honorable names? Do they? Have they told you they find them offensive, demeaning, or derogatory? Maybe if you actually let them speak, they could tell you. The board cited the supposed negative impact these names have on Native Americans, but here we have an actual Native American chief who supports keeping the names. I wonder why the board refuses to hear from him? Why are they ignoring him? If anyone's opinion on this issue should be ignored, it should be yours and those of your fellow board members. None of you speak for Native Americans, none of you. You should let them speak for themselves. It appears that you're the ones who are discriminating against Native Americans by silencing the voices of those who disagree with you, and you just stare and smile and carry on. If you truly cared about Native Americans and how they felt about the names Warrior and Chieftain, you would invite them to this meeting to discuss the topic, not hide behind procedural technicalities of meeting agendas. Given the lack of due diligence performed by this board when making the rash decision to strip our high schools of these honored and respective names, you would have all been well-served to listen to Native Americans in this state, especially a leader as honorable as Chief Velkey. Democracy dies in the darkness. I ask you all to stop hiding in the shadows and step into the light. If you'd like more information to support our petition to save the Hall Warriors and Conner Chieftains, please contact me and my friends at hallconnordunited@gmail.com. Hallconnordunited@gmail.com. We will not rest until the Warriors and Chieftains are restored to this community for generations to come. Thank you, and long live the Warriors.
Next, we have John Souza.
Good evening. John Souza, 8 Ironwood Lane in West Hartford, longtime resident, grew up in town, came back when I had kids, put them through the school system. I'm still actively coaching in town for younger people. I saw an article in The Current about the SEL discussion with the schools, and I was really terrified, horrified that the topic of gender identity is being taught to kindergartners, first graders, without the express permission of parents. I learned that the topic is part of the civics curriculum, and it's not eligible to be opt out of, like, doesn't require specific notice of the parents of the materials used as well. Parents are trusting, they're busy, you know? This town's expensive to live in, the state's very expensive to live in. Everybody's working, they're busy. They trust the school system to do the right things. I think they would be dismayed if to learn exactly what's being taught to their five- and six-year-olds. I'm going to guess that a lot of them don't know what's going on. We used to teach our kids, when I was growing up and when my kids were little, we used to teach them to respect everybody. That's common courtesy, regardless of their gender, their color, their disability. They didn't need to understand the reasons that all the adult concepts behind it. They didn't need to understand that. They just were taught to respect everybody regardless. Now, I wondered to myself, has the world gone crazy? Is nothing off limits to little kids today? These are complicated, difficult subjects, even for adults, let's be honest. So why can't we just let kids be innocent? Do we have to sacrifice a little more of childhood on the altar of sexual anxieties today? This is getting out of hand. Stop sexualizing kids at a tender age. Move the gender identity portion of SEL to the health curriculum outside of the K-5 grades. Require full disclosure of the topics and material to be used, given to parents in writing. Then allow the parents to opt out according to their own judgments in good sense. It's scary to me that this stuff happens without letting everybody know. And you can say, "Well, they posted on the website." You know, it's all there to see, but it's not there to see because people are busy. If they knew exactly what was happening, I think a lot of people would be up in arms, to be honest with you. Even better, I say to myself, I remember when my kids were little, even when I was little, the teachers were overwhelmed, they had so much to do, they have to teach to the test, and they can't get all these other topics in. Let's take this stuff out of the curriculum. Do we really need that? I mean, everybody in this room, these are educated people. I could teach my little kids, you know, basic understanding of what they need to know. They don't need to know everything that's horrible in society today. Not saying that this topic is horrible, it's just over their head, and they don't need to understand it. I think we're beyond that point. We shouldn't be sexualizing young children. That's all I'm trying to say. Thank you for your time, and I hope I made my points clear.
Thank you. Next, we have Trevor Horn.
Hello, thank you. My name's Trevor Horn. I'm from 30 Garland Road in West Hartford. I'm here to speak in support of the continued inclusion of the social emotional learning curriculum for the elementary school children. My family moved to West Hartford after researching school districts that would explicitly include social emotional learning. The benefits that we see our children gaining from the curriculum that they're part of now, that they are being exposed to in the magnet school today that they attend are significant, but we wanted to be able to bring our kids into a local school system where they start attending school with neighbors they interact with on a daily basis. So our experience with social emotional learning is one that has helped in partnership with us to teach our children acceptance and empathy for others around them. My children have a far more nuanced understanding of how, not only to interpret other people's feelings, but how to interpret and deal with their own emotions than even I do today as an adult. I certainly attribute that partially to the social and emotional curriculum that their school has implemented, which appears to be very similar to West Hartford's. We are planning on sending our children to the local school next fall, assuming that this curriculum is not actually in threat of removal. So for the most part, I am here just in response to seeing the news articles about how this curriculum is intact here in town. My wife started speaking with other parents we know in town that are very much in favor of these programs in school and wanted to see ourselves, see for ourselves what was being said. I watched the last meeting that took place online and was happy to see that there were others who stood up in support to defend the program, like several of us are here today to do as well. I do want to touch on, I first want to address, you know, that I heard some residents at the last meeting talk about specific books that are part of the curriculum, specifically one about transgender teddy bear. When it comes to the transgender community, there seems to be a lot of confusion from parents about what it means to be trans, and I'm not here to educate anyone on that today, but I would point those parents to resources like the Trevor Project, True Colors, and Glisten to gather more understanding of what it means to be trans. I will say, though, that being trans is not something that is controversial. It is a state of being that people actually have to exist with. All books, like the one previously mentioned, do is try to normalize the concept that transgender people do exist and should not be marginalized because of who they are. I implore everyone to read those books that are easily found on the West Hartford School District's website and actually take time to learn about the concepts presented in them. We are not sexualizing young children by giving them the language to talk about who they are. While not every parent may want their children to understand these concepts, I would say what ends up, that ends up being more of an argument of why this is crucial to continue including in the curriculum. The mere fact that there is opposition to the inclusion of topics surrounding empathy and tolerance tells me that there may not be much explicit learning on those topics in such households. So at the very least, kids can be exposed to that as a requirement in our schools. I do also want to mention that this is not just about acceptance and tolerance.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm over my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Casey Rousseau.
Good evening. My name is Casey Rousseau. I live at 85 Fenbrook Road. I'm here to thank the board for their actions in February to end our town's use of the historically racist nicknames for our two excellent high schools. I'm very supportive of the process established and distressed that a population of residents has decided to put energy into retaining these names rather than into something more productive. The board's decision in February was completely in keeping with the equity policy established in 2021, which expanded on the 2020 promise to dismantle all elements of systemic racism and historical inequities, and I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Excuse me. The level of respect is not only for those at the podium speaking, but those also in the audience. Thank you. Next, we will hear from Cody Falconer, I believe.
Hello. My name is Cody, and I am visiting from 243 Steel Road. I am a proud member of the LGBTQ+ community, and I identify as a transgender male. During the last meeting, we heard from both sides of an emotionally charged topic focused around the K-5 social emotional curriculum, in particular, a book that teachers are mandated to read about understanding gender identity, being transgender, and the process of transitioning. Myself and others feel as though reading this book to such a young audience will be dangerous and confusing for children, especially those that are neurodiverse. As a grown man, I still struggle with the complex and ever-expanding gender identity spectrum, which has been a long journey of understanding and self-discovery. To introduce this to kindergartners who developmentally cannot grasp the concept of gender completely will only lead to confusion and is a grave disservice to the queer community. At this young age, I still believed in Santa Claus, magic, and unicorns. In no world I would have been able to comprehend the concept of gender identity, and in fact, it would have led to more confusion among myself and peers. Children are simply not developmentally or neuropsychologically developed enough to safely process the information introduced in this book. This will inevitably lead to self-diagnosis of being trans, which will have dangerous and potentially irreversible effects that lead into adolescence and adulthood. Ultimately, parents should have the option Ultimately, parents should have the option to enroll their child into this curriculum. Obviously, there are varying opinions on this matter. Some parents will be okay with their very young children hearing from their teacher about gender identity. However, for those that aren't, the options should be available to opt out of this. I am beyond happy to live in a world where this is something that is discussed in schools, but K-5 is entirely too young. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Next, we will have Sean Daly.
Thank you. Well, West Hartford Board of Education members, my name is Sean Daly, and I reside at 1779 Asylum Avenue in West Hartford. As a resident of over 50 years and a product of the West Hartford education system, Duffy, Sedgwick, and Conard, and a parent of a daughter in the school system, I must say how ashamed I am of the majority party of this board. Your failure to practice what you preach is abysmal and unacceptable. First, you ask for opinion from students and the general public on the high school names issue, but when you don't get the answers you want, you ignore it. Then, you have a state-recognized tribal chief who wishes to address the board in support of an honorable place of a school mascot name, and in a racist manner, you refuse to provide him with the honor of an agenda item speaking spot, and instead, relegate him to the back of the proverbial agenda bus, with the general public only allowing three minutes to challenge this governing body. It's shameful, and this board needs to practice what it preaches concerning diversity and inclusion. I call on the Board of Ed to reconsider and invite Chief Velkey and give him the agenda item he deserves to appropriately address this body. There are members of this board that nearly make me ashamed of being alum of the University of Connecticut. One would think that a professor of ethics would recognize the hypocrisy of this issue and fight for Chief Velkey. After all, even though the National Congress of Indians wants to end the use of harmful Indian mascots, we now have two tribes that say these names are not harmful. Kind of blows that theory out of the water. Then you continue to refuse to listen to the majority of parents in West Hartford with valid concerns about the skewed and inappropriate reading material as it pertains to generic curriculum for the kindergarten through third-grade level in West Hartford public schools. And when Dr. Harris reaches out to you with an olive branch to allow for public forum for parents to provide their opinions on the subject, you cower in fear and attack Dr. Harris. We all know what the true issue is. Dr. Rosina Haskins is not the solution. She is the real problem with our SEL curriculum. She has gone far past what even the state of Connecticut guidelines feel are appropriate in an effort to justify her role and push her personal agenda of indoctrination in our school system that removes parents from any form of control over their own children. I ask this board searches for a replacement for Tom Moore that is more level-headed, less fear-mongering toward parental involvement with the school system, and most importantly, someone who truly understands diversity and inclusion and will remove Dr. Haskins from her role. Many of you may not remember, but there was a time not long ago when a different party ruled West Hartford, and they came into the majority over a Board of Education issue. And it was even during a time when Democrats outnumbered Republicans three to one, as it does today. You've seen what has happened in San Francisco, the state of Virginia, and other towns in Connecticut. Don't be so arrogant as to think it won't happen here. Take a look at your audience. It's different people coming to speak with you every week, and they're going to keep coming until you listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Rickson, I believe, or last initial begins with R. John. I'll say it one more time, John. Yes. All right, well, we will move on to the next name on the list. Ellen.
Good evening. Whoops. Don't start the clock, because I lost my speech. Thank you. My name is Ellen Nichols. I'm a retired sixth-grade teacher, and I live on Quaker Lane. Tonight, I'm asking the board to perform a full review of the gender identity curriculum. It has been in place almost a full school year and continues to raise concerns among many parents, teachers, and residents. The gender lessons tell five- and six-year-olds that a boy can change to a girl and that their sex might have been misassigned at birth. By doing so, West Hartford has disregarded the professional standards provided by the state of Connecticut, and this deviation deserves a close look. First, the state includes gender identity lessons under health education, which includes sex ed, healthy relationships, and mental and emotional health. One would think West Hartford would place their gender lessons under health ed as well, but they did not. Instead, our town put gender lessons under civics, which is a branch of social studies, slash SEL, social-emotional learning. Why did West Hartford not follow the state guideline? One reason might be that the state allows parents to opt their child out of health, sex ed, but it does not allow them to opt out of civics or SEL. It seems the administration does not want parents to have that choice. This is something the board should rectify. Put gender identity in the health, sex ed curriculum, and let parents be the ones to decide if their kids should have these controversial lessons. The second thing the board should look at is the age when gender identity is taught. Personally, I think it does not belong in the schools, but the state health education standards incorporate gender identity twice, both of them many grades higher than West Hartford. For example, one standard is called Sexual Health. It calls for children to describe how people are similar and different, including sexual identity, gender, gender identity, and gender expression. The state recommends this be taught in grades three to five, but in West Hartford, we start in kindergarten. West Hartford begins gender identity at five years old, at an age where children can become confused, question their own biology, and wonder about their family values. In towns that follow the state's standards, kids may be hearing these ideas at age 10 instead of age five, older, or, in many towns, not at all. West Hartford has chosen to ignore the state's standards and is introducing gender lessons not only to younger children, but also preventing parents from opting them out. This is why the board should call for a complete rewrite of the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maggie Edwards.
Hello. My name is Maggie Edwards. I live on South Main Street. Pardon me if I get emotional, this is really tough for me. Some of the members of the board may have gotten my email about what happened regarding my daughter. Last Friday, as we were waiting for my daughter to get in her last acceptance for college, she got into all 10 of 10, got into Howard. As I was calling to brag, she got a message on social media from a fellow student at Hall that, I will warn you, is quite disgusting and graphic, and went on for quite a while. He called her the N-word over and over and over again, told her to kill herself over and over again, sent her videos of Nazis killing black people, of homophobic slurs, of anti-Semitic slurs, the N-word over and over again, a video of Nazis killing black people. He told her that he would hang her from a tree if she does not hang herself. He told her multiple times, he sent her pictures of her in middle school. And I want to thank the West Hartford PD because they did arrest this person, and she can't know who it is because it's a minor, but this is a series of events that, over the last couple of months, has been getting worse and worse in the high schools. Mainly, a lot of what I hear about at Hall from talking to other parents, other friends, some have actually asked to move their children out of Hall into other schools or out of the school system altogether. There was things in the bathroom, there's kids that go up to some of the children in the school and tell them on a daily basis to kill themselves, or call them the N-word. And something has to be done, because I'm sick of doing, excuse my language, but doing this shit over and over and over again. My kids have every right to go to school and not be harassed, and you can believe whatever you want, or you don't have to like other people, or whatever, but it's common respect to not tell kids to kill themselves, or to contact them, or to show them pictures of them when they were younger, make threats. She got into all 10 schools, all 10 schools. And she should have been celebrating that and not worrying how to continuously deal with this crap, excuse my language. And she would like to speak, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elise Edwards.
Hello. I'm said daughter, Elise Edwards, 554 South Main Street. I come to the board today, especially as my mom discussed, me getting terrible threats about my life, but I'm not really here to talk about my experience as this kid. The only reason I really, I'm really happy that the police were able to find him is because we don't know how many people this kid also told to kill themselves. I personally know multiple people who have mental disorders, as well as I do, who would actually listen to this kid, and I just, I don't understand why people do this. It's like, especially whole high school claiming diversity here and there, we took probably like three steps forward to take a million steps back to go back to where we were before. Especially in the case of just like colored people in general, my friends, including myself, are uncomfortable in multiple classrooms because not only are we the only colored people there, but anytime race is involved in the conversation, we feel forced to say something, and that should not be the case. We should not have to run away from kids because they want to come up to us and tell us that we should die because of our skin color. And I don't mean to blame parents because I for sure know that friends have a lot more to do with influencing other kids than parents do, but it kind of draws a line of, what are you teaching your kids if other kids are going up to people and telling them that they should kill themselves because they can't change the way they look? I don't have much to say other than that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cheryl Starbrat, Cheryl.
Hello. I'm Cheryl Starbrat. I live at 122 Mohawk Drive. I have two young kids in the West Hartford school system, kindergarten and third grade, and I know the SEL program has been painted to be this terrible program that's shoving gender down little children's throats and making them identify themselves, and that is not our experience at all. Everything has been extremely age-appropriate. I don't think my kindergartner has even really broached the subject yet, and my third-grader is just learning how to be able to speak about it respectfully and be able to talk about it, and I think that's the ultimate goal of this. Being a kid is tough, and whether we talk about it or not, children are going to come from a huge variety of family structures, and they're going to be feeling a multitude of feelings about themselves. I was in elementary school in the 80s in Ohio, and we didn't talk about that kind of thing at all. And so, when our differences started to emerge as we got older, I think people approached it with fear, and as a result of that, kids were bullied and made fun of. And they probably, the kids that were maybe feeling feelings of being gay or trans, had no way to identify that because it wasn't normalized at all. And I can't imagine how isolating that must have felt. And I feel very proud to be in a school system that, from an early age, is teaching language to talk about it and normalizing it and allowing kids to just be open to it. So when their classmates might start to, you see these differences emerge, it's not going to be this scary weird thing that's been silenced. We'll be able to just be, which is what we all want for ourselves, and I think every parent wants that. And it's not this huge scary curriculum, I can assure you. My kids are thriving in it, absolutely. That's all I have to say. I just wanted to speak out in support of SEL.
Thank you. As we said at the top, we have 21 minutes per subject matter, so we have time for one more comment in regard to SEL. And so, if there, I'll call the next name, and if you are speaking on SEL, that will be the last comment on that at this time. And as we know, at the end of the meeting, we do have public comments. However, if there are other comments on other subject areas, we do have time and rather space for those. India Liddy.
Hi. India Liddell, 26 Fernwood Road. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. As you know, I wrote you an email last week asking you to consider putting an item on the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda item was Chief Richard Velkey of the Scaticope Tribe, one of the five recognized tribes in Connecticut, and one of which who the board sought input from early on regarding the use of the warrior and chieftain names. My email indicated to you that Chief Velkey would be here tonight to express his support in continued use of the names of warrior and chieftains by our two high schools. My understanding from Mr. Scott Zweig, who met with and spoke several times with Chief Velkey, is that the chief contacted Chairwoman Farquharson, requesting time on the agenda to speak at this evening's meeting. I also understand that at one point in time, Dr. Farquharson agreed to have Chief Velkey speak, but then rescinded that offer. The facts might be slightly skewed, but Mr. Zweig clarified that. The reason behind this decision is unknown, however, you will notice that Chief Velkey is not here tonight, and that is because of that. Although he could have attended and been given his three minutes of public comment, he was too insulted by the unwelcoming response of our Board of Education. Uninviting a chief is one of the, I'm sorry, uninviting a chief of one of the active and recognized tribes of Connecticut is beyond disrespectful. What were you afraid to hear? That maybe you had made a mistake, that the generic warrior and chieftain names are not considered derogatory? You asked for input, but because Chief Velkey may not have been the input you were seeking, you decided it did not fit your agenda and was not necessary. As I've said once before, you will continue to vote the way you like, but you should at least have given him the opportunity and the respect to be heard. I believe the $27,000 tribal funding includes a requirement that Native American history will be taught to our children. I looked at both the current middle and high school curriculum descriptions and did not find any reference to Native American studies. I did find World Regional Studies, Middle American and Caribbean, South American, Western, Eastern Europe, Sub-Saharan Africa, Middle East, Africa, Asia, Revolutionary War, Modern Warfare, Latin American Studies, Modern Africa, Middle East, African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Studies, most recently added by Governor Lamont. During the 2021 legislative session, Senator Kathy Austin did push through a Senate bill 314, which called for our local and regional school boards to include Native American Studies in the social studies curriculum. I acknowledge this bill is in conjunction with discontinuing the use of offensive Native American mascots, and I do believe this is to be implemented in 2023 and 2024. But why wait? This topic is not over, not just yet. No matter what the outcome, I will tell you this, I will make sure that our schools do create- I will make sure that our schools do create a thorough curriculum with lesson plans that teach our children about the history of our Connecticut tribal nations, so they are not discarded, not forgotten, and most importantly, not erased by people like the West Hartford Board of Education.
Thank you. I see John Sousa's name here, but I know he spoke previously. Okay, all right. So, thank you. Then we have Mary Nagy.
Hello, my name is Mary Nagy of 43 Acadia Street. I am an RN mandated reporter. My public health nursing background includes school nursing, teaching nursing students developmental psychology, physical assessment skills, and adolescent psychiatric nursing. I've recently reviewed content dispersed to West Hartford teachers on the back cover of an SCL Gender Identity Instruction Book and Books for K-5. These promote stereotypes and gender dress and color, confusing school-aged scholars. My three points. Number one, gender identity does not determine biology. 160-plus genes are embedded in our DNA at the fertilization of egg by sperm. XX and XY chromosomes determine sex and gender. These are not assigned by a doctor at birth. They are seen as early as 12 weeks gestation by ultrasound and confirmed by blood test. Conversely, gender identity literature alleges gender is assigned at birth, not embedded in our DNA. Gender is not something you, quote, "feel inside," as seen in the K-level book Teddy Becoming Tilly, suggesting you can transition back and forth. While this might be magical thinking, it is not kind. It is confusing and scary, leading to my second point. Kindergarten is not a place to teach gender transitioning. In kindergarten, a child of this tender age should not be led to question if they have a boy inside of them or a girl. Kids need to be themselves without being sexualized. Secondary sex traits are hormonally driven and puberty not before. Puberty is on average ages 12 and 13. Public health authorities tell us we have a contagion of gender confusion and suicide. Trans kids are at 19% higher risk. Yet 90% will detransition if left alone. Not that we shouldn't accompany them. Decreased social media greatly limits both. And this leads me to my third point. Remember the natural latency period, K through puberty. Latency simply means kids are happy to be tasked with making friends, achieving certain basic understanding of academics, reading math, spelling, science. U.S. ranks 30th behind other countries in math. We can do better or be excluded. Math books need to be reviewed for content bias and stereotypes. Yesterday, over 70 math books in Florida were removed from schools due to content bias. Please remove from the current West Hartford SCL Learning Gender Identity Reading List all books promoting gender identity ideology. Place them on the list promoting stereotypes. Every book I saw promotes divisive stereotypes and potential harm to family and children. West Hartford is diverse. Many of my friends, neighbors, and families wear culture-derived clothing and colors. Africans, Indian, Pakistani, Vietnamese-Americans, male and female, wear tunics. Girls, you wear albs, cassocks, and habits. Clothes should not be sexualized, stereotyped. As seen in the student's book, Jacob Wears a Dress. Instead, let us focus on kindness. Now, I don't know if I've gone over my three minutes, but I have a one minute that I'd like to speak to Indian culture, because I don't want to introduce myself a second time.
I understand. Pardon me, ma'am, just out of respect for everyone.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, but your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Is it the full three minutes?
It is, yes. When the red card is shown.
I didn't see it.
Yes. Three minutes.
Okay. I am a trans-cultural nurse. I support the use of the mascots. My great-grandparents came here.
Mary, I don't want to be rude to have to turn off the mic. But please, your time has expired. Thank you. Next on the list, Mary, I see your name again on a different topic, but I'm just going to go, I'll come back to you, please. Thank you. That is the max for social-emotional learning discussion at this time. Again, at the end of the meeting, we do have time for public comments. So, if I call your name, and if you are to speak, wanting to speak on SCL, please do share your time at the end of the meeting. But if it's on another subject, please do come to the podium. Next, we have Kate. Caps, capes? Okay, so, thank you. And Gina Morris, I see SCL as well. All right, thank you. And Russell Gardner.
Russell Gardner. I live at 8 Willow Lane in West Hartford. This is a completely different topic. I'm here to talk about the high school graduations. I had the privilege of attending a high school graduation in Hall last year, and that happened to be my first encounter with the Board of Ed. At the graduation, it included a member of the Board of Ed speaking as part of the graduation. I found that astonishing. So, I asked, can you hear me okay? Okay. So, I asked several parents, I did my own survey, and asked several parents why a member of the Board of Ed was speaking at the graduation. It was unanimous. They had no idea. I then asked each parent who this person was. They didn't know who they were. Then I asked each parent if they saw any value in having a Board of Ed member speaking at the graduation. They didn't see any reason why to do that. I then did a survey of several students, asked the same three questions. Who is this person? They had no idea. Why are they at the graduation, speaking? They had no idea. Do they see any value? They had no, they didn't see any value. So, apparently, it's some sort of tradition that the Board of Ed likes to have a member speak at graduations. So, I'm here to let you know, I'll speak for myself at this point, that parents have, the families have no interest in hearing you speak at a graduation. I shouldn't even have to be here to explain it to you, but I will walk you through it, okay? A graduation is about the students graduating. The graduation is for the students and their families. It's bad enough hearing the principal talk too much, okay? But then to hear you, I mean, it's something narcissistic. And I'm waiting for, to see what happens at the graduation this year. And whoever speaks, I'm going to come back and let you know how mediocre your speech was, okay? It was mediocre last year. It was embarrassing. And it seems like you, some of you, this is not for all of you, but whoever is planning on speaking at the graduation this year, take a good look at yourself, okay? Don't listen to your friends and family. Of course, they're going to say, yes, we'd love to hear you talk. But take a good look at yourself and ask why you're being so narcissistic. And think, rather than thinking of yourselves, think about the students and the families. Let the students speak more. You know, find ways, let the principal know, don't talk too much, and find ways to have more students speak during the graduation. That's what we want.
Thank you. That is all that we have listed here. Was there anyone who did not sign up and wanted to speak on any other subject matter apart from SCL? Again, at the end of the meeting. So, ma'am, yes, and then Mary will call on you. Yes, ma'am, at the door. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I'm talking about military children.
Yes, you may. Yes, you can come to the podium, and please share your name and your address.
Yes.
My name is Coralise Ruiz, and I live in Thomas Street. And I am a parent of three children in the West Hartford School District. We are new to the district. We arrived in July of last year. We are a military family. My husband serves in the U.S. Army, and he is stationed in Berry Rosenblad Army Reserve Center here in West Hartford. As every military family, we face difficulties, but also have the opportunity to go places that others cannot and learn from others in ways that are unimaginable. The reason of my visit and comments tonight is that April is the month of the military child. I am a bit sad because I have not seen anything done by the state or the school district. When my husband told me that he had orders to come here to Connecticut, I was excited and scared, scared because of the transition of my children. My fears grew when I visited the school district website and found no information for military families. I couldn't even find online how many military children are in the state of Connecticut, let alone in the school district. I can tell you that in the state that we were living before coming here, there are over 13,000 military children. But my fear came true when I received a call from the district stating that my children were not going to be enrolled until we had a home address in West Hartford. I was shocked and frustrated. There is a military compact nationwide that is supposed to protect us. Everyone knows about the existence of military children, yet there is lack of understanding or empathy by the West Hartford District. When enrolling, I used my husband's duty station address, as I can do, but I was scolded by the district employee that called me because according to her, I needed a home address. In the state that we were living, military orders and duty station address was enough to get my children enrolled. After we finally had an address, I was told that we needed a physical and a dental evaluation in order for the kids to start school. It took many phone calls until I found an angel in one of my kids' school, which is the spouse of a veteran, and she convinced the school to give us time to get those ready so the kids could attend school normally. She did this because she knew what we were going through. She understood us and had empathy and compassion, unlike the school district. It also took many phone calls to doctor offices in Connecticut to get those appointments that first week of school. Medical offices here are also not very welcoming to military families and the issues we face. These are things that no military family should endure because there is a common knowledge of us, but also military compacts nationwide. Worldwide, there are more than 1.6 million military children who face many challenges and unique experiences as a result of their parents' service. While military members serve around the world, we often forget the challenges faced by their children. Military families move on an average every two to three years, like us, impacting military children through changing schools and support networks. Defense Secretary Kaspar Wangberger was responsible for establishing April as the month of the military child in 1986, and the Department of Defense has honored his initiative ever since. The month of April is an important one for military children who have one or both parents serving in uniform. Due to what I have mentioned tonight, I invite the West Hartford School District, as well as the school districts in the state, and the leadership of the state of Connecticut, the state representatives, state senators, and the governor, as well as the congressional delegation, to purple up and join the President of the United States of America, fellow states, and the Department of Defense, schools, and military-serving organizations in celebrating and assisting military children and the sacrifices they make. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight and share awareness about military children. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Yes, sir, pardon me. Sir, one moment. I'm just going to have Mary, and then I'll have you to go, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your kindness. I apologize for continuing to speak. My name is Mary Nagy. I'm from 43 Acadia Street, and I previously introduced a little bit about my professional background. I've been living at my current address for about less than 30 years, but I've been living in West Hartford for 40 years. I am a trans-cultural nurse, and I take pride in the American Indian history and culture. I take no offense at the mascots and the beautiful names and images of warrior and chieftains. I take northeast pride in them, and I grieve the institutional memory loss upon their removal. My second point is my great-grandparents came to West Hartford from Hungary, and my grandparents came from Ireland. Both names, the warrior can cut out a Hungarian background and chieftain's an Irish background. These could be from other cultures too, even though they are from the American Indian culture, and West Hartford rightly chose them in the 1950s. That's 70 years. My third point, American Indians, such as the Wampanoag tribe that still live in Massachusetts, inhabited West Hartford and were kidnapped by the Spaniards in the late 1500s, and those remaining died out in the 16th century. Don't further erase American cultural Indian history. Fourth point, West Hartford has vestiges of Indian culture and street names found in Tungusus Plantation, Mohawk Drive, Mohegan's. These are worthy. These should remain too. My fifth point, I personally was raised in Simsbury. My parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents came, though, to West Hartford from their respective countries. That's four generations. Simsbury prizes its Indian culture and history, and I wish West Hartford would too. Please reinstate mascot names and worthy reference to American Indian tribes and culture and languages. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back, yes.
Good evening. My name is Juan Viermezar. I live at Tom Brook Lane in West Hartford. And again, I am back here advocating for my son. I forgot to mention he's black last time I spoke to you guys, and that he was bullied. I told you guys that, right? And he also suffering from PTSD from his teacher. He doesn't want to go back to his classroom. He doesn't want to be in that classroom. And we're awaiting a meeting with his teacher, face-to-face with his teacher, the head of the ES department, the principal, and his advocates. And we haven't heard yet. We had a meeting last, two weeks ago on Thursday, and there were no solutions given. So, what is going on with this inclusion? I mean, you guys are preaching a good song. You guys are up here preaching some good stuff, but it's about time we practice it. Because it's more like the town and the school is afraid that I'm going to sue you guys. But you're putting me in that position because you have a plan for my son, a written plan that you're not following, that the reason he ended up what he ended up is because you did not follow that plan. And I'm still looking for answers. I expect a little bit more from you guys. You know, and this is just, this is what nobody knows about. And what everybody knows about, the changing of the names, the education program, you're still hiding all that information from everybody. We all want answers. I want answers. This lady, this young lady who was accepted to 10 colleges, I fear my son, what's going to happen to him? He's being bullied. Oh, he's not a little kid either. He's a huge kid. He's a 10-year-old that looks like he's 15, and he's being bullied because he's got dark skin, curly hair, and he's just very quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments that would like to be made? Again, if it's on SCL, if you can please reserve it till the end of the meeting, but at this time on any other subject matter.
I'm Cindy Gauthier from Manchester Circle. My daughter is a student at Conard High School and is in the special ed. And to say I'm frustrated is, I can't find a word big enough to describe my feelings about our special ed system in the school district. She has been pushed through since Webster Hill, told that everything's going to be fine, you know, the whole nine. I'm just, I'm over it. And I think more parents need to know that our special ed department needs to do better by these kids. I have asked repeatedly for her to be held back, and I am constantly told, we don't do that in West Hartford. do that in West Hartford." She gets a D, and they tell me that's passing. That is not acceptable. How are we setting these children up to be successful adults and be able to be successful at college if we're telling them that a D is great? And I get nowhere with the school. I've tried and tried and tried with the pupil services to get her into an alternate placement, and I was told a few weeks ago at my last PPT meeting, "That's not going to happen." And I think the problem is with our school system is individuals that work there think that they're God. They think they have all this power, and he looked me in the face and said, "That's not going to happen, Mom." And I said, "Do you think I'm going to go away because you said that's not going to happen? Because I'm not going to go away, and I told you that, Mr. Moore, many years ago. I'm not going anywhere." But my kid is getting ready to graduate, and what is she going to be in life if she's not given the opportunities that every other child in this town is given because she has an invisible disability? So she can walk, she can do everything like a normal kid, so they don't see the disability, and they don't get her the services that she is entitled to and she deserves. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience, from the area here? I'll ask again, any other comments? One last time. Okay, we're going to pause on public comments. Again, we do have it at the end of the meeting as well. Moving on to unfinished business.
At the April 5 meeting, based on a letter that was sent by Chief Felke to a member of the West Hartford community and published in the West Hartford News, I made a motion that the board invite Chief Felke as, as well as the other tribal leaders for the other Connecticut Native American tribes. My intent was to have them attend tonight's meeting. With 2020 hindsight, 2020 hindsight, I'm sorry, I should have made the motion for the specific date instead of not specifying any date. I'm now trying to correct that mistake. Why am I doing this? There were a lot of assumptions made by members of the board and members of the community as to the wishes and beliefs of the Native American tribes. While we received several letters from the tribes, speaking for myself, I found the letters ambiguous and open to multiple interpretations. While I voted to keep the names as is because I believe the names warriors and chieftains without the imagery that was removed in 2015 could be attributed to a number of things unrelated to Native American history, I would now like to hear from those with actual Native American history because I think that was a guide for many, and their thoughts on the names. As members of the school board, I believe we have a responsibility to make sure that the appropriate due diligence in terms of the meaning of the names from both sides, those who are for it and those who are against it from a Native American perspective. As someone who has a strong interest in history, I would generally like to hear what the chief and other tribal chiefs have to say. I also think that as an academic organization, which we represent, it is important to encourage different points of view. We should complete the process in terms of what the change meant from a historical perspective and fully understand what it means to them. I have heard, been told, that the board does not invite individuals outside the school administration to testify outside of the public communication section of our meeting. I acknowledge that, but think that given the perceived impact of the name change in the community, this be the one time to make an exception. Without context, the name change is small, but you look at the passions that this has raised for the community, both positive and negative, and I think we owe it to the community to complete the process and hear from the various chiefs. Hopefully, there'll be more than one that would like to speak. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we, the West Hartford School Board, invite Chief Felke and all of the other tribal leaders to give their thoughts on the West Hartford team names at the first board meeting of May. I have no idea if they're available, but I feel it's important to make the effort. So I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second? Suck up. Discussion. Again, the motion on the floor is for the five tribal nations to chiefs to be invited to the Board of Education meeting taking place in the first meeting in May. Discussion.
I can speak again.
Avery.
Forgive me if this was already covered. Has there been a conversation with these individuals and groups to confirm that this date would be one that they'd be available for and willing to come in for?
Speaking for myself, I haven't done anything because I didn't think it would be appropriate without having the board's approval. So I wasn't, I don't think that's something I should do.
All right. That's understandable. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Claire.
The process that's been started within the schools with the voting and that, are you okay with that continuing as we go? Are you also asking that to change?
I'm taking it one step at a time. I'm not asking for that to change. I would, in a perfect world, I would like to be able to say, "Let's relook at this." I don't, I think that'd be overplaying, right now, I think more important, let's hear from them, and then maybe it convinces everybody, but I don't think that would happen, so I'm not looking for that to happen. I'd be okay with it happening and support it, but I'm not looking for that to happen in my motion.
Other questions, comments?
Just a request that when the vote is taken, it be taken by roll call, please.
Duly noted. Other questions, comments? Gail.
Yeah, I want to, just in support of what Ethan's asking for, I feel that the way we've handled this process has not really been in the best way that we could have handled it. I think that this obviously is bringing up a tremendous amount of passion in our community on both sides, and nobody who sits on this board is a Native American, and we all, you know, gave little speeches when we took the vote. But at the end of the day, I think it's very important to hear from the Native American tribes in our state and then to really think about what they think about these names. I think that, you know, to do due diligence, that would be an appropriate step. When Jason first made the motion, I believe it, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was in December, and then I had requested that we have some extra time to kind of listen to what the students think, what the community thinks. Truthfully, I don't think that we were given really enough time. I know some people probably going to disagree with that, but I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. There's a lot of information that we could gather, and I don't really think that we did that in a way that, you know, could have been more appropriate and more complete. So I would very much like to hear from the people who are the most affected by these names, and I would be very much interested in hearing from really all the different tribes if they would come and speak to us.
Yes, Ethan.
I was going to say, the answer to the question, I have not made any invitation or talked to anybody because I didn't think that would be appropriate. If the vote got approved, I'm happy to try and make the calls or work with whoever else is interested in doing it. And my intent is to have as many, as much feedback just for the, to hear what has to be said from a historical perspective as anybody, but I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody.
Claire.
I'm very curious about how the tribes feel and would be interested to hear it, but I'm very concerned about the students. And if you have a large number of kids who don't like that name being used with their team, they won't wear the paraphernalia with it, you know, we did get a lot of letters. And so the chiefs can have feelings about their name being used, but what do we do about the students who aren't comfortable? And that's my concern. So there are many reasons of why I voted, and I would be interested to hear from the chiefs, but they're not 14 and 15 years old in a school with new policies, with the state coming up with culturally relevant pedagogy. They don't have some of the knowledge that is happening in this time and age.
So if I could respond, two things. One is, some of the students who may not like the names now may hear something different. But two, I think for those who like them, don't like them, I think it's good just to have a historical perspective in general. And my hope is it'd be a learning, as I did not put in a motion to change the names because I don't, the vote's been taken, I would like to change them, but I think I would lose, so why do something? It's just taking a step forward, and to me, it's completing the loop, so. But my hope is it would be a learning for everybody involved because a lot of assumptions were made with the best of intent, but they were assumption.
Other questions, comments?
I actually am all for having a panel of several of the tribal leaders. If the purpose is to provide education and to get a broader understanding, I guess my fear is, is that having them come and having us hear a different perspective or whatever the perspectives are, I don't want the assumption to be that this is, if they say we're good to go, we approve. There are other factors, as Claire said, that went into the decision, so I also don't want, I don't want to mislead the public or mislead the board that this would then be, we're going to change the decision. The decision has been, we made a vote. I would not pause the process that we're in the midst of right now to wait to hear and schedule. But if the purpose really is for education and the purpose is to kind of hear other perspectives, I would be comfortable with that. I just don't want the assumption to be, you know, if they come and they approve, that then we are revoting or we're revisiting the topic.
So I can only speak for myself. My assumption is they're coming here to, for, to me, it's for education and educating. Like I said, I am not, I'm not adverse to the change, but I did not make the assumption, particularly after having talked to y'all, that everybody would say, "Oh, no matter what they say, that'll change." It might. If I was betting man, I wouldn't go to the casinos and put that wager down. So I think it's important, though, that we complete the loop. That's just my feeling. What happens after that, I don't know. I did want to try and get this sooner than later just because we are choosing, the name stuff is in process, and my motion does not have anything to change that because I don't think that would be appropriate at this time.
Other questions, comments? I appreciate, oh, yes, Jason.
Thank you, Lorna. Yeah, thank you for the motion. I appreciate the curiosity and the interest in dialogue. And I think, you know, we, this would be a replication of the process that's already been established. We've asked for and received letters from the tribes. There's, there's also, you know, to me, that, you know, thinking about what we've, what we decided on was a process that seemed, you know, appropriate and inclusive of all the things that, the information that we sought, students, residents. So one of the things that I think we learned from this is that, that mascots really have no educational value. We don't learn much from mascots. We, we know that because the ideas around the mascots.
Pardon me. Excuse me again. Please be respectful and contain yourselves as comments are being made.
Because the ideas around the mascot have changed pretty rapidly, so can we expect any kind of lesson to be learned from that? So, but we have established that the names do present harm for students. And...
Excuse me again. Please be respectful and contain yourselves. We have young people here, young people watching. It's important to model for them appropriate ways of responding, even if comments are made that you may not agree with.
This process has shown exactly what the research tells us, that without more diverse and accurate representations of natives, that mascots become the lightning rod. It's important to have many more things in really substantive fashion. If we are to honor native folks, team names are not the way to do it. The Pequot, the Mashatac Pequot tribe, the Scaticoke Tribal Nation, the Golden Hill Pagusset, and the Mohegans have all made applications for federal recognition and state recognition of their tribal status. Nowhere in these applications have they mentioned the recognition awarded to them by team names of any high school in Connecticut. If team names were so important to tribal nations, they would have mentioned them in their applications to the state and federal government for recognition. This is not a legitimate claim to honoring tribal people. There's a lot more that people can do if they want to honor indigenous people in this state. The Attorney General is the caretaker of the state's relationship with tribal nations. If there is a support for these tribal nations, it should be expressed to the Attorney General. The Bureau of Indian Affairs has a Northeast Region Office that does handle tribal nation status. That's also an appropriate way to express your support for native tribes. There are also many tribes who don't have recognition, who don't have the status afforded to them, such as the Sikiag, Tunksis, and Nipmuck peoples. So, you know, to think of the removal of these names, to use the argument that removing these names somehow diminishes the honor to native peoples is very hard to swallow. The Scaticoke tribe has suffered from deliberate exclusion from their lands. In the 1960s, the town of Kent sent their firefighters to practice putting out fires on the homes of a Scaticoke Tribal Nation. When they were denied entry to their lands, their lands were allowed to go unmaintained, and they were not granted permission to return to their lands. This prevented them from establishing the necessary requirements that would be available to them in their application for tribal sovereignty. One useful mechanism that can be used to support native people is to call One useful mechanism that can be used to support native people is to call for the strengthening of Connecticut's Indian Affairs Council. Those formed in 1975. The last time, to my knowledge, that this council had a quorum was 1992. This is an important voice for tribal leadership in Connecticut governance. We want to know history, right? So this is, this is the history of the Scatacoke tribe, as told by one of its members, Ruth Garby Torres. What we're here to do is to take care of our schools and to ensure the equity and inclusion of all students in the educational environment. And these mascots have really shown to be an obstacle and barrier to that. I'm going to say no to the vote no on, on this because the process that's going forward has shown a much stronger student participation in the excitement around building a new name than to even participate in the original survey. Demonstrating an interest in moving forward. These ideas are about the future. And we want all of our students to be able to, to enjoy and benefit from the educational environment. And I think this process has really, you know, provided a window into a new place for them that they've decided. So I think I'll stop there.
So if I could respond more?
Yes, Ethan.
So, in this, so as, as I said, when this first vote took place, to me warriors particularly is a name that could be used for Native Americans but could be used elsewhere. However, it was attributed for the vote for those against it because of the Native American context. I, with all due respect, I think it's for the Native Americans to say this is positive or negative to them, not to us, or particularly with, you know, from a background perspective. You can say you don't like the name, you don't think it's respectable, but in fairness, I think that if we have the chance to hear from those impacted about it, okay? Then we should hear from them. It would be like someone trying to tell me about my religion or me trying to tell someone else about their religion. I just think if we really want to complete the circle, then that's what we should do. And I just, you know, mascots is, it's there. It's, I mean, I, you know, was that, my college mascot was the Quakers. There's nothing exciting about that. But, and nobody was making fun of the Quakers. It's just what it is. And I just think we should complete the loop. We should hear what they have to say. And from an overall historic perspective, frankly, it'd be very interesting and I don't see how we lose in that perspective.
Gail?
Jason, I just want to respond to what you said. You know, I respect your opinion and I respect your, your knowledge about all of this. But at the end of the day, I feel it's incredibly important for us as a board to hear again from the people who this most impacts. And that's not us. And at the end of the day, I mean, we all still may exactly feel the same way that we felt beforehand. But I think it also is questionable how it comes across as a board when we are being asked by a chief and maybe other chiefs that would like to address us and may have differing opinions on this issue and we don't allow that process to happen. I personally think, I know you probably don't agree with me, but I think the process was flawed. I think it was rushed and I don't know why it was rushed. We, you know, we were told that we're going to get into budget season. There was no real need to run to do this without getting all of the information that we could. And at the end of the day, we may, nothing may change here, but I think it's important to hear from the people that this most impacts. And I would like very much for the board to allow the Native American community to address us on this particular issue. Excuse me. Thank you.
Andrew?
I guess I have a few things to say. Number one, I think that Mr. Chang made a good point that students have definitely been very eager to come up with new mascot names. I just, I just wanted to clarify one thing that I think maybe more than one person said. I remember that Avery's poll showed that a majority of students did support keeping the warrior name. But, but to me, to me, I, I really don't see inviting him as initiating a reversal, nor do I think that it necessarily should be. For me, when I was conducting my own evidence to, to share with you, to help you all inform your decisions, to me, I valued the Native American students, the Native American student who reached out to me enormously. I think that the testimony she gave to me was extremely powerful. I, I know at least one of you expressed that it was extremely helpful to you in making your decision. And I, I think that we're obliged to listen to this Native American man who wants to speak. I'd say one thing that I also felt, I wished we had had more Native American perspectives, especially of students, but I realize that it's a small number of Native American students we have at Hall and Connor anyways. But when we have the opportunity to hear from somebody who this is their lived experience, I don't know how we could refuse wanting to hear from him. I mean, I really, in school, I really haven't learned that much about Native Americans. In this process, I really didn't learn that much about Native Americans. And for decades, we did use, we did use names and, and images that were explicitly tied to their culture. So I feel obliged to hear what he has to say. I, I don't even know really his, his points. I don't, somebody said that he was in favor of keeping them, but I've yet to hear that from him. So I'm not really sure. What, what I do know is that I don't see any harm to myself in my educational journey in hearing from him.
Avery, yes?
So just for the purpose of, I have another point, but I just want to say for the purpose of making sure that we're all on the same page, my survey, I believe it was around 62% were in favor of keeping the name, 33% were in favor of changing the name, and then whoever was left over was unsure. But the exact, the 10 digits might be a little bit off, but it's around there. I, I really want to echo what I've heard a few members of this board and Andrew say, that this is an issue that impacts a very small minority of stu-, like impacts a very small minority of students in our school district. But their experiences and the research that we've seen on how portrayals of Native Americans in stereotyped imagery impacts youth, I think that those experi-, that these experiences need to be taken with the most gravity possible. And I think Miss Nasserella's point too, that she mentioned when we were doing this vote of having such contention between the student body, even if it's a majority, 30% of the students wanting to change the name is still a significant portion of the students. And that sort of division in our school, I believe that it shouldn't, I don't think that, that we, that we should be fostering that. I think that we should be trying to form unity, especially in a setting that is meant to uplift everyone. But as I do say that, I am really, I, I'm really appreciative of Mr. Goldman's interest in creating an opportunity for the board to have this narrative as part of our history. And I wonder, going forward, this perhaps wouldn't be part of this motion at all, but I wonder going forward with the, opening these lines of communication via an in-person dialogue rather than letters that members of the board who are not Native American then interpret. I wonder if this could be used as an opportunity to then inform the histories that we, as a community and in our schools use, because like Andrew said, we don't learn that much about Native Americans in our schools. And I think that this voting process, for those who have had the opportunity, has been a learning experience. And even if we do not return to the motion, I think it'd be very positive for our community to become more informed about what the implications of this will be in the long term. And to just be more informed about how we can, as a West Hartford community, work together better.
Other questions, comments?
So thank you, Ethan, for bringing forth the motion. And I think a common thread that has been shared with comments from all is there is a shared desire to learn more. But I think at that point, that's where there is some different direction in terms of why wanting to learn more. I hear with the motion that it is to, I appreciate hearing that it's to have all of the, welcoming or inviting all of the tribal leaders to share their thoughts. And I think in terms of our school district, that has been an ongoing area of desire for us to want to learn and enhance our curriculum as it relates to Native American culture. We've never claimed to have, be doing all of it. We've been very clear in saying we know we need more to do. So appreciate the candor of our young, of our students here, sharing how, acknowledging that there is room for growth to learn more of that. And that's something we collectively want to do. But I also just want to be clear in not wanting a next step to give a misinterpretation of what that next step may lead to. I also want to be clear that we are, in terms of the process that was done, that we can respectfully agree to disagree on the process. But I also don't want the narrative to be rewritten. We know that communication and outreach was made to all of the tribal nations. And we know that we received communication back from them. Now, whether some found the content of the letters significant in terms of what they said they wanted not, it does not take away from the fact that opinions and thoughts were shared in those letters. And I think it is important for us to be respectful in acknowledging what was said in those letters. People and persons communicate in different ways, but we certainly don't want to minimize what was expressed in those letters. And we also don't want to take away from letters that we received, even dating back to 2015. Yes, that was seven years ago. But that doesn't mean that the content of what was discussed in that letter changed. What was discussed in that letter was quite clear. And so with that information in terms of what we heard from, received from the tribal nations, coupled with hearing from our students in the community, we know that contributed to ultimately the vote that was made on the first. But even beyond that, we know that as board members, our due diligence is to support and uphold policy. And for those who voted in the way that they did, a great deal of that was because of the two policies that we have in place, in particular Policy 1800. So I just want to be clear with that piece because I don't want it to be, the, the, the events to be altered in a way as if things just did not take place acknowledging the voice and, and input of others. I also, with the specific, I know the recommendation you made before of inviting Chief Elke and with that being a part of this conversation and also all of the other tribes, want to be clear as well that the only communication, the only comments that were made in regard to Chief Elke's presence here consistently were in regard to the opportunity for public comment, only because we already had the agenda already in place. So just want to be clear with that. But also want for, for us to know, and we know already as a board, that Chief Elke did reach out directly to, to us, or to myself, and appreciated that. And we also know that I responded back to Chief Elke and responded back and, and in response to his comments and shared the position that we have in terms of where our agenda is today and how you certainly welcome to participate in public comment. And also what led up to the vote that we made February 1st. And so it was a pretty detailed response. And we also know that Chief Elke responded to that email. And in that email, he expressed appreciation for the response. And he also expressed appreciation for the vote that was made on February the 1st. That is important to know. And so with the desire of hearing from all of the tribal nations, I, again, that is something we all share. We want to, to learn more. But I also don't want it to be misconstrued as that is a step leading towards a means of changing a vote that did follow due process that was done in Feb-, on February the 1st. We collectively want to be able to learn more. We know we have more that we need to learn. And we want for that to be an inclusive process. And so with that, it seems like you're ready to hit that button to make a response. So please go right ahead. Nope, I will pause. Please go. That's all right.
I was going to say, as you know, two weeks ago, when I realized that, when I made the motion and afterwards realized it wasn't going to happen because of timing, I did say I wanted to do this. So I just think it's important to do. I don't have any, I, I, like I said, I'd be thrilled if we changed the name back, but that's not part of my motion because it's not realistic. It, it may, he may be compelling and maybe y'all will say, let's do it and then I'll adapt, okay? But right now, I don't have any, that's not what I'm pushing for. That's not what I'm asking for. Right now, I'm just saying, I think it would be a healthy process to have, and I hope it would be multiple individuals. And, and I wish there was more time so we could schedule one that would be appropriate for them. So I have no idea if Chief Elke can attend. I have no idea if anybody else can attend, but I figure at least let's try. And then we'll, we see where it goes. I think one of the things as the student spoke, both speakers were, is maybe it's something that you can establish through relationship so it does become part of a normal process, not a, not a unusual or, or out of the norm process. But that's something for the school administration, but at least the contacts would be made. Sorry, my notes have been asking for.
No, that's all right. Yes, Claire?
Would, would you be open to their presence being either in a Zoom or a recorded remark specifically to West Hartford so that they wouldn't have to necessarily have that exact date free? So that they would have a chance to, I mean, we got written statements, but would you accept a video statement about our town specifically?
Claire, I love that idea, except I do think there's something more genuine about being able to, just like when we have people sit at the table here and we can sort of go back and forth with them. I think it's, it's a much more thorough, meaningful process when you can have that back and forth. And I also want to say one other thing. I, I know what Lorna said is like she doesn't want it to seem as if we potentially could be going in a different direction. But, you know, I myself, if I could hear from some of these people that represent Native Americans, I mean, maybe my ideas would change as well. And I, I think that should be open to everybody at this table, that, you know, we may not be, part of Ethan's motion is not to go and change what's already happened. But when you actually hear from people that this affects and you can have a back and forth conversation with them, you know, I, I would be open to thinking of things in a different way as I, just as I hope everybody at this, at the table would be.
Claire and then Ethan, yes.
So I just think that human beings have schedules and we have lives. And to tell a Native American chief, you have this one opportunity to come to a meeting that could last three hours and that's your only chance to share, is not being respectful of their lives and their time. So, I mean, we're giving them one moment, you know, one evening that they can come. And if they have a graduation, if they have anything else in their life going on, they have no voice.
Well, I mean, maybe that, maybe then we would have to assess it. But I mean, if that could happen in that forum where we can have the back and forth, I personally think that's preferable. I do understand what you're saying that if, you know, they can't come at this particular day, at this particular hour, then maybe we look for an alternative option.
That's fine. My response would be, I think the Zoom may be something My response would be, I think the Zoom may be something we have, we should do, if that's the option. Pre-recorded, just, it's, you're not asking, it's not a give and take. I mean, but if that's the only choice we have, then I guess we'd have to figure it out. It just doesn't seem like it's fair to the individual you're talking around, I don't know. But clearly, the preferred option would be to be here, but I accept your point that, particularly if there's a geographical distance, you know, it's, we should be accommodating as best we can. So to me, the Zoom makes perfect sense. Sorry, but that's just my thought.
So, may I ask, with the motion, the way it was presented, it was presented and gave a specific date. And so, but I'm hearing from discussion that it's more of wanting to have it to be a learning piece, and that seems more open-ended. And so, again, if it's a matter of open-ended learning, that's something that can be in collaboration with many efforts, many entities. We know our public library, they could be a part of to support that efforts, and our school those pieces. But if it's just for the, if it's time-sensitive and for the purpose of doing it because of events that are happening, that again gives a different impression for the desire for wanting to have them here.
So, there's a lot of context coming here. I think it should be in the context of what's going on around us, because then I think some of the, you won't be, nobody will be listening as intently. So I would prefer to have it. Now, if they said, we gotta do it in four weeks, I don't know, that's, cross that bridge when we go there, but I'd rather be aiming for the two weeks. And then, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. You know, I, I'm not, I made a motion that was general before, and it got, you know, nothing hap, it didn't work the way I wanted it, so I'm trying to be, do the dates. So I'm trying to learn.
And just so, yes, just so I'm clear, it is within the context, with you saying context, it is within the context of the school mascot.
Because I think right now, people are focused, people are focused on it, okay? And again, I, speaking for myself, I didn't hear anybody volunteer to say, let's go revoke this, or whatever. I'm perfectly fine if y'all did, but right now, I just want to hear what they have to say. I'm frankly very interested, because that's something, a lot of assumptions are made, valid assumptions, and probably, in some cases, it's accurate, but in some cases, it's not, so.
Deb.
May I offer a friendly amendment, that when we issue the invitation, we allow for the invitee to designate a person to attend in his or her stead if they're not available on the date that we ask.
That works for me.
I need to actually move that as an amendment, so I will move that as a friendly amendment.
Is there a second to the amended motion on the floor?
Second.
So the discussion now is in regard to an invitation being made to the five tribal nations, either the chief or designee, as it relates to the topic of school mascots.
How they view it.
In regard to their, so, all right.
For the first meeting in May, right? That's part of the motion?
For the, yes, for the first meeting in May, okay. I'm just pausing, only because that ask was made, and we received the response.
I understand, but I think it's some of those, as I run them, were ambiguous, and I think you're gonna get more out of the give and take dialogue, as I think Gail or someone else said, and also having them have a chance to express themselves other than in one letter. And some of those letters, to me, again, I don't want to rehash this debate. I lost it.
Gail.
I'll rehash it. I just, I do want to also say that I agree with Ethan on these letters. I mean, they can be interpreted different ways. I mean, one of the letters, I'm not gonna go through everything here, does say if, like, from the Mashentucket Peacock tribe, that if a school or sports team using a specific tribal name has written consent of the federal state-recognized tribe whose name is being used to, that would be acceptable. So, the problem with these letters is I don't think that they're really, they're vague to some degree, and people can interpret them as they wish. I think when we have a, you know, a face-to-face discussion, we can ask the kinds of questions we want to ask, get, listen to those answers, that's an entirely different venue or information gathering tool than would be coming out of these letters.
My thought is, with that, though, I imagine as a board, we don't want to put anyone, this could be in any subject matter, in a defensive state. And just from what I'm hearing, if we were to have them there and to question when they've already shared their thoughts, and although persons may view the content of it differently, it also, we also would not want to be disrespectful, as it will explain yourself. And so that's just, that, that is what I'm pausing on.
Except that, that is not my intent. My intent is, if there's questions, is to try and get more information, not to, if the guy, it would be a loser to challenge somebody based on what they believe. And it would not, it wouldn't be appropriate, but it would also be, it, it's, I just don't, I mean, from a pure debate perspective, it's a losing hand. So, that is not my intent. I can't be, I assume it wouldn't be the intent of anybody else. The intent is to just clarify, understand, and get more information, so. But I fully respect what you say, it should, under no circumstances should it be confrontational. If you disagree with somebody, you disagree with somebody.
Andrew, and then Avery.
I just wanted to say that I do hear what you're saying, but I think, at, pretty, I mean, every single time a panel has come during the board meeting, and you guys have asked them questions, I think you've asked them very respectfully, and I think that they value the opportunity to speak, and I've certainly personally valued the opportunity to learn. So, while, I mean, I hear what you're saying of like, I don't, I don't want this one man to feel on the defensive. I think that all of you have asked our questions in the past in a way that really is more exploratory in asking every speaker to just share their insights, valued insights that you all clearly do communicate, you appreciate. So hopefully, he would, he would also feel the same way as all of our past speakers have.
Avery.
So, this may be a little bit repetitive, as we've had a little bit of discussion of this. I'm just wondering, in regards to preventing this from becoming a defend yourself, explain yourself sort of situation, and in preserving, like, the intents of this board as they've been expressed for learning and exploration, I'm wondering, as it was mentioned earlier, if inviting tribal leaders to come to a board meeting, what the purpose of that? Because I've seen throughout my time, my short period of time here, that when we have, when we have panels of people come in to give presentations on school subjects, those are usually for the purpose of better understanding the allocation of funds, better understanding how policy should be applied, and informing the public of activities that are occurring in the schools. So I'm asking Mr. Goldman, with this new information that we're hoping to glean, or clarifications, what the intended application of that is going to be?
So, we made, or a number, everybody made assumptions based upon what we thought was appropriate, and what we thought was right was wrong. A lot of assumptions were made of, this is what the Native Americans want, believe, think, should be. This is a chance to hear what they actually think. What was very compelling to me was in the letter, I think it was a letter, or it was somewhere I saw, maybe it was in the newspaper, there was some comment that eliminating, they were, he was concerned about eliminating his heritage, cleaning, you know, by cleaning it out. And I, that, I had never heard that before, and I thought that was relatively interesting. And it struck a chord with me, because people do worry about their heritage being eliminated. So, again, it's partly just educational, he's willing to speak. My hope is others would be willing to speak. Maybe we do it through the Zoom. We certainly can have designate, because as was pointed out, people do have calendars. And, you know, just because we have a date, but I just think to get the focus, we need to pick a time and then move from there, because if we leave it ambiguous, it just won't happen, so. Did I answer your question, or at least, at least I tried?
Maybe I should give a little more context. There was this brief discussion of this sort of discussion being something that could be facilitated through, for example, the West Hartford Public Libraries. And I'm wondering if this discussion would hypothetically be pursued through the libraries versus through here, if, I, I just, I'm wondering, like, if that would have a more beneficial outcome for our communities in Connecticut as a whole, also in West Hartford, and then specifically, like, for the board's application purposes, if we were to invite people here, what the information would be used to inform going forward?
Ari.
It's a perfect segue, Avery, thank you. I was actually, as you spoke, my, my question is going to be, if the purpose of this discussion invitation is for education purposes, are there other venues that could be used besides a Board of Ed meeting, where this is not a typical venue for those matters? So if the purpose is education and recognizing different points of view and providing historical context, are there other venues that could be proposed that would not be on a Board of Ed meeting agenda?
So, again, I'm at a disadvantage, because I haven't spoke to the chief, had any contact with the chief, had any contact with any other chief, or any other tribal leader. So I'm making assumptions. My assumption is that it'd be more compelling for them to come to a board meeting and be able to talk than to go to the library, with no disrespect to the library. And I think we are, at least I am, and so I assume others would be interested in what is being said. I'm sure, I'm not sure if a library has the same kind of contacts, or even, you know, do they do things at night? I don't even know if they're open anymore at night. So I, I can't answer that. All I can make is a motion, and I have no way to compel the library to do anything, or this group to do anything.
I will say to you, and I appreciate you sharing what you're assuming and what you're not, what you may not know for a fact. I'm just also reflecting back on Chief Elke's reply email, and not only did he make reference to expressing appreciation for how we voted, he also highlighted the importance of wanting his tribal nation to be respected, and the history to be taught and learned at a state level. So I think, again, he shares the sentiment of wanting the educational aspect of it from a broader perspective, because he specifically, and again, you can reference the email, specifically made reference to, from a, on a state level, wanting for this to be acknowledged, and the educational experience to be broadened. So I, I think that that does give some insight in terms of venues that may facilitate that broad learning experience. I can't.
Given my length of time here on the Board of Ed, I was just wondering if anyone else, Tom, yourself included, could provide some perspective? If such an issue has, has ever come, you know, to the board, how it was handled, you know, just to give some sort of historical context regarding a similar matter or similar topic?
There's been learning topics that we've brought up that throughout the year, we discuss, where we had seminars and presentations with parent groups, with student groups throughout the year, rather than a one-off, which is kind of, you know, that's the, the question I have is really, and I, I just, I'm always nervous about tokenism. You tell me about your people and what your people think, because there's a body of knowledge about this, and there's, this isn't, this is a subject, and, and good people can disagree. And it is one of, it's one of those things that I think, understanding and root cause is more than a two-hour board meeting. If we, if we want to really get into this, then I would suggest a focused, long-term book study, combined with panel discussions, where we invite different panelists, both from scholarly fields and from Native American groups, and try to do it in context with our history department, with the library, but it's not a one-meeting thing, I would say. It's, it's months of learning, and real deep learning, if, if that's what the community wants, which I think we would all welcome. But that, that, that would be the mechanism that I would see. But that's a different purpose. I understand what Ethan's saying. I'm not saying, I'm just saying that whatever you're, it's a question of what the goal is, is it, we want to talk about West Hartford's vote on this, or do we want to talk about mascots, traditions, and what that means to Native Americans, both in Connecticut and across the country? So I, I think there are, it's a competing goal, as to what's the, what's the goal here?
Other thoughts or comments before we vote on the motion on the floor? Jason.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think if the purpose is to learn, there's a lot of resources already available that we just have to pick up and read. The, one of the most consistent messages from Native tribes in Connecticut is that they want their land back. That's the most consistent message that they, they've argued for. West Hartford Public Schools does not own any land. The town of West Hartford owns land. And if they did, you know, if West Hartford was willing to, to turn over that land back to Native sovereignty, that would, that would be something I think the tribes would be interested in. That's the very clear message from much of the litigation. Much of their tribal governance is concerned with land management and the resources of sustaining their population. So, you know, the interests for a school district's, you know, use of a name does not really pertain to the, the survival of, of these tribes. So there are very material, physical conditions that the tribes do, do consistently argue for. And fortunately, none of those resources are at the disposal of the West Hartford Public Schools.
Deb.
I wasn't going to speak, but I don't, I don't really want to belabor this point, and I think everyone knows where we all stand. But, you know, I think Jason makes some really good points about the most important things that we can do as a society to repair what has happened with the Native Americans here in Connecticut, here in our nation. And some of those things do involve deep discussions around land ownership. I think you mentioned a Native American council that the state has vacant positions on. But, you know, we can't do that as a Board of Ed. What we can do is we can invite our local tribal leaders to come address us, and allow us the opportunity to engage in a dialogue with them, not about, you know, all of the different ways that we can enhance our curriculum or improve our relationships, but at least for a beginning conversation, to hear their thoughts on a topic that we have brought forward that has made our community interested, that has in some ways divided our community. And I feel it could be healing for our community to hear from our local tribal leaders. For me personally, as a board member, I would definitely appreciate the opportunity to engage in dialogue with our tribal leaders. You know, just like later in the agenda, we have a report on our high school counseling, and it's in writing, and we can all read it, but that's not enough for us. We want to invite the experts on this topic who wrote this report to come forward, so that we can engage in a dialogue and ask questions and learn more. And that, inviting our tribal leaders here to our board in a forum where clearly the community is paying attention and is interested in learning. community is paying attention and is interested in learning about this issue is a way where we can learn more than what they have written on paper. We can learn more than the resources that we can find online, and we can hear directly from the people who are most impacted by these decisions. You know, there's a saying in the advocacy community, "Nothing about us without us." I urge my colleagues to support this motion.
I do have a response, and I appreciate, thank you, the, what you shared and how you responded. Again, I just want to restate that the way that the motion is on the floor, it is directly connected to the mascot matter, and that's different than having an open-ended exchange and learning process. And so I just, I say that because I don't want to exploit the desire of wanting to learn more for a desire of wanting to rebut the outcome of a vote that happened in February that did happen in response to solicitation of feedback from a collective body that did result in feedback received from the very tribal nations that we're speaking about inviting, where the view is their response was not adequate enough. I think that that is not a fair representation of respecting what some have said. And so I just think it's important to be clear with what the motion is saying. It's specifically tied to, I don't think it's fair to view that not supporting this motion is going against wanting to hear from the tribal nations and wanting to learn more of the process. Again, the common thread that has been shared with all of us is we recognize the value of learning, the educational opportunities for this, and that it's something that is an ongoing process, an ongoing area of growth we have had, that we desire to have. It's not accurate or fair to base the decision on this motion to determine whether or not that is something we are collectively in support of. And so with that, with the motion again, that is on the table on the floor in regard to inviting the five tribal nations to come to the first Board of Ed meeting on May the 1st, to hear their thoughts specifically as it relates to the school mascot matter. The vote, rather, the motion is on the floor, and if we can please, early roll call to hear the votes.
Dr. Chang?
No.
Mr. Goldman?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Nazarella?
Yes.
Ms. Poland?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
No.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson?
So the motion passes, and again, it is with the intent of inviting the five tribal nations to come to...
Or their representative.
Or their representative, thank you, to come to the meeting on February the 1st. Again, the, May the 1st, pardon me, to come to the meeting on May the 1st in regard...
May 3rd.
May the 3rd, the first meeting in May. To come to the first meeting in May, to come before the board, to be on the agenda, to come before the board, to share their thoughts on the school mascot matter. And so with that, just want to be clear that we still already have a process underway that our students and teachers and staff are already a part of. So that will continue. But in response to this motion, the vote, the invitation will be extended.
So do you want me to help try and, and I've not talked to anybody, but I'm happy to help since I started this, to try and get them, or is, should that be done without...
We'll talk, we'll collaborate. Because I want to make sure that, again, the events as they happen and the narrative in which they happen are accurately shared and reported to all. So we will certainly, as a fellow board member, we will collaborate and ensure that our collective body is aware of those steps.
Okay. I offer.
We'll collaborate, yes, yes. All right. Moving on to new business, we have the ratification of the West Hartford Custodians, the recommendation that the Board of Education ratified the negotiated agreement between the West Hartford Custodians 3s and the Board of Education for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2026. Hello there.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Before you for approval is a ratified agreement between the Board of Education and the West Hartford Custodian 3s. So that's how they go by. This is a group of four custodians, one at Conard, one at Hall, one at KP, and one at Cedric, that essentially act as the head custodian at their respective school and oversee daily operations. The C3s ratified this agreement on March 11th. So the contract that you are voting on this evening is a four-year contract, and we'll call for a general wage increase of 3% each year. Looking at the insurance category, we have increased the employee premium cost share in 2022, 23, and 23, 24 to 20.5%. Then in 2024, 25, and 25, 26, it will increase to 21%. We also have a few minor changes that I'd like to highlight. We increased the employee annual shoe allowance to $200, and we increased the longevity payment by $200 in each of the years of service category. So that summarizes this agreement. I did want to just take a quick moment to thank all of our C3s for the work that they do day in and day out, supporting the needs that it takes to not only have a school looking good, but to make sure that it's welcoming to all of the folks that enter there. So we would be happy to answer any questions the board may have before you vote on this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Ethan?
I assume it's such a small number, but this fits within the budget for...
It does. These increases have been included in our adopted budget.
I assume that, but I figured I'd ask.
Yep, very good.
Other questions? Gail?
I have actually two questions. One is, can you tell us how many people this affects? How many people are in this contract?
So it was four.
This is only, this is four people?
Correct. One at Conard, one at Hall, one at KP, and one at Cedric.
Oh, okay. And can you explain to me the longevity column there?
Sure. It's essentially the years of service that an employee has been with us. So you can see on page one there where it's a breakdown of six to nine years of service. So an individual will receive $800.
Eight hundred, $800 per year?
One time, a one-time payment.
A one-time.
And so you can see the breakdown as it goes through all the way till an employee has 25 years or more of service, then they would get $1,200.
That's like a, like a bonus, a one-time bonus?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments, questions, unless time? All right. So again, seeking a motion that the Board of Education ratify the negotiated agreement between the West Hartford Custodian 3s and the Board of Education for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2026. So moved, Madam Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to staff communications and reports. We now will have our superintendent's report.
In the history interest of time, I'm going to go relatively quickly. I want to congratulate, we had two Cedric 8th grade Quest students who submitted their Type III projects to the Hartford Regional Connecticut History Day contest, and they came in first and second place in their division, and they're moving on to the state contest. In first place, junior individual documentary, Juliana Farquharson. Congratulations to Juliana. And second place, junior individual documentary, Conrad Kalke. Congratulations to Conrad. We're very proud of these students, their hard work, their ambition, and we look forward to the work they'll continue to do as they prepare their documentaries for the state contest. Years ago, a young Fallon Moore went to Nationals in that contest. I will brag. And then we got very good news just today. NAMM, the National Association of Music Merchants, gives out awards on the Best Communities for Music Education in the United States, and West Hartford was once again selected as one of the representative, one of the state representatives for Best Communities for Music Education in the United States. So with everything that our music department's gone through with COVID, that is certainly a feather in their cap. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that there were 59 different winning Voice for Change proposals. Remember, we talked about this a couple weeks ago, where money from the American Leaf Plan and Esser Funds, the governor and the state set aside money that students could propose items for their local schools and decide how that money should be spent. There were 59 winners across the state of Connecticut. Two came from West Hartford. From Conard, the Everyone Wins Initiative, which is about science and student-led art projects. And at Hall, the Outdoor Wellness Project with space for outdoor classes to promote positive mental health practices at Hall. Both were deemed by the state to be winners, got enough votes to be winners, and we're proud of them, and we'll be getting a check from the state, and those students will run those projects over the next year or so. Excellent examples of community involvement. So with that, let us move on.
Thank you so much. Brief questions at all? Yes, Gail. When the superintendent, it has to be in regard to what was shared during the superintendent's session. Any other questions regarding what was shared, superintendent's report? All right. Thank you so much. Now moving on to staff reports and board discussions, non-renewal of non-tenured personnel. Back to the table once again. Mr. Duarte.
All right. Good evening again. Every year at this time, we present a list of non-tenured teachers whose contracts are expiring on June 30th, and according to state statute, the Board of Education has to vote to non-renew these contracts. So in front of you, all of you should have an envelope with those names in there. Once this occurs, we are then required to provide written notification of that vote to the impacted non-tenured teachers. So before you this evening, you have a list of 41 teachers who are being non-renewed. The majority of these are interim teachers who are filling in for folks that are out on leave. When we hire them, they understand this is part of the process. They know that they're filling in for someone that essentially will be coming back, and when that person, that teacher comes back, that essentially their contract expires. So the good news, the good news is that we have a tremendous, and oftentimes, we do a tremendous amount of hiring from this list. So of the 41 names that you see in front of you, when I come back in the fall and do the opening schools report, hopefully you'll see many of these folks on that list as either being in an interim position again or now being a contracted teacher. So, you know, as always, our pool of candidates that we've hired, they're exceptional. We've been very impressed and very proud of the work that our interim teachers have done. I've been and had the pleasure of seeing them either in action or meeting many of them as we hire them. So we are excited for that. So following the vote this evening, we will provide written notification to the teachers tomorrow. We will, of course, thank them for their service this year, and we'll just let them know that their contract does indeed expire on June 30th. I do want to just point out, this is really more of a formality. All of these teachers know that this is going to happen, and they, most of them also know that the vote is occurring tonight. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have before you vote.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do, if I could just add, and Julio said it, but I just want to give our thanks to these people that took the opportunity this year to come work for us in the midst of COVID, amidst uncertainty, in a time where we needed staff members. And Julio just went to the recruiting fair, and we have our own recruiting fair coming up, but he just went at UConn. Basically, every student teacher, which in the past, they're just student teaching, every student teacher is in a contracted position at this point because there is such a shortage right now in Connecticut. So these people really stepped up for us, and we're greatly appreciative to them this time.
Yes, I appreciate that. And Mr. Moore stole my thunder, so I will do a quick plug at the end, but I won't deviate from your procedure here.
Claire?
Yeah, so I'm just, do you have a typical or what an average new hire is each year?
What do you mean by...
Well, like, do you typically hire 50 teachers each year, or what's your normal...
It's somewhere between 60 and 100. It just depends when you, when you go through the retirements and then people that move and then shifts that come about, and then these type of one-off contracts that come up because people could be on maternity leave for the year or other kind of leaves. It's typically, there's low years we've had in the past few years where it's been as low as 50, but there's been as many as 100.
Okay.
And I think that's a good point because it's one of our, I think, advantages, why we also get such a strong applicant pool, because they know, and we tell them, you're coming in, but we're a large district. We do have folks that retire, and there are openings every year. And so essentially, you get to take an interim position, and I always tell them, consider this a two, three, however long interview, because I think we would always prefer to see a body of work over someone sitting in front of us having a conversation. And so many of them excel and do really, really well, and then ultimately, the principals end up fighting over them and where they're going to land. So it's a good place, I think, for many of our folks.
And just to follow up, these teachers, do they have personal days or can they get release time to interview if they find another opportunity so that they're, have something in the fall if they're not offered a position?
Right. So they're contracted teachers, they're entitled to all of those, and we understand and want to be with all of our employees flexible. And as we said, everyone, our goal is to have everyone land on their feet. Our goal is to have them land on their feet in West Hartford, but we understand that different things happen, different opportunities, and so we certainly are accommodating when we need to be.
Other questions?
Just trying to get on context. What percentage do you think of the people on this list will be rehired in the fall ballpark?
I'd have to completely just make up a number, but I'll give you 50%. How's that? Does that sound good? I don't know, Tom, if you have a better number, but...
Okay. So it's just a standard process? It just seems crazy, but I guess it is what it is.
Yeah. And we do, you know, we try to make sure, and that's why we work with our teachers to help them understand, because again, I got one myself as well that first year, and so it's scary when you get that piece of paper and you don't really know what it means. And so just wanting to make sure that we comfort them and let them understand it has nothing to do with performance, because ultimately, I think, as soon as you receive a letter like this, you think it's a performance and you think, no one's told me anything. And so we're really clear with them upfront and with the union on those pieces. So like I said, this is not a surprise to anyone.
Other, excuse me, other questions? All right. So with that, seeking a motion to move forward with the non-renewal of non-tenured personnel. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? We've had it, but any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Great. And before I leave, I'll give a quick shameless plug for our career fair coming up on the 26th, so we are very excited about it, want to promote it, and we're hoping, and I was just at UConn with Natalie Simpson, and we got to interview and talk to some different candidates. And as Tom said, we recognize that we want to be proactive, and we want to make sure that candidates understand West Hartford and the beauty that it is to work and the support that they get in this district. So we want to continue to encourage folks to come out for that experience. So, thank you.
Absolutely. No shame with that at all. Thank you so much. All right. Now moving on to high school counseling program. We now will hear from Ms. Ann McKernan and Ms. Melane Thomas. Oh, and Mr. Paul Vancinus as well, yes, of course.
Yeah, but you know, Paul, that's not... This is Melanie's first time up at the board table presenting, and Melanie took over our school counseling department last summer. And as you know, we have big plans for how we want to shift our school counseling department to high school. We've realigned some things. We brought Melanie in, who is an expert and has done wonderful work at looking at where we are, what we're doing, and what we can do better. And so this is really a first step almost in terms of a report on, because I've talked about this to the board a lot over the past few years, and this is kind of a first step into Melanie's work, what the goal of the department is, and just kind of as a welcome to Melanie in her first presentation to the board. So...
And I will only say that Tom has simply done a masterful job saying, better than I could, everything that I was about to say. My only contribution to this report is to welcome Melanie to the table, to introduce her to all of you, and really just compliment her on the great start that she's had and the impact she's already having in the district. So I'll turn it over to Melanie.
Can you hear me? Okay. Unmuting in real life versus Google me. Didn't know it was a thing. But thank you, everyone, for having me, and I'm excited to present to you guys. And I just want to say a quick comment about the two young people sitting at the table. You guys are amazing. I'm very impressed with everything you've said and done today, and I just want to kind of take some time to give you guys a quick shout-out because I think it's very impressive and a great learning experience for you both to be here. So as mentioned, my name is Melanie Thomas. I'm the new department supervisor for school counseling at the high school level at West Hartford Public Schools. Just a little bit of background about myself, I am from New Haven, Connecticut. I graduated from a small magnet school in New Haven and went to UConn, got all three of my degrees from UConn. And I spent the first eight years of my career in Manchester at Manchester... And I spent the first eight years of my career in Manchester at Manchester High School, and now I'm here in West Hartford. So I'm going to provide a quick overview of our school counseling program, give you some information about some of the focuses we've had for the year, some future goals, and then some time for questions. And I will try to keep it as succinct as possible because my bedtime alarm went off. So. So goals, and I'm going to kind of look at notes as I do this. So our mission is to guide all students towards the best possible opportunities in a supportive environment. And the emphasis on all is really important, especially after, you know, some of what we heard today. I am very passionate about helping diverse groups of students and believe that every student deserves fair opportunities in terms of schools and what we provide, especially in the school counseling department. Our program kind of goals and curriculum is based on the ASCA model, so the American School Counseling Association. And that basically means that our program is data-driven. We're continuously looking at data and looking at ways to improve how we collect data in order to make decisions about our programming. We deliver our program to students in a systematic fashion throughout the school year. So there are kind of different themes throughout different times of the school year and different themes based on grade level. And we deliver our program in a variety of formats ranging from individual counseling, group counseling or small group counseling, as well as classroom presentations. We try our best to keep everything age-appropriate in terms of grade level, you know, starting off in ninth grade with transitioning to high school, all the way through 12th grade when students are thinking about their lives after high school and everything in between. In conjunction with every other staff member in West Hartford Public Schools, we aim to help close achievement gaps through our programs. And we really want to kind of support students overall. I have the, you know, mindset that counselors play the middle role in everything. We're kind of a liaison between families, students, teachers, administrators, and we, you know, we want to support everyone at the table. But the students are at the center of all the decision-making. Just a little bit about the staffing. So each high school has eight school counselors. And we also have two career, college and career coordinators, one at each school. The structure of the caseloads, I know there's a little bit of debate, but I see the value on both sides. So in West Hartford Public Schools, our format is that we have two ninth-grade counselors and they only work with ninth-grade students. So each year, they welcome a new freshman class. And their focus is really on helping students transition to high school because that is a big deal. And it really sets the tone for students in terms of their success in high school. After ninth grade, students move on to a new school counselor in their 10th grade year. And then the idea is that they stick with that same counselor for the remainder of their high school career, for lack of a better word. And that is where the school counselors deliver the rest of the curriculum. So the topics that are geared towards grades 10 through 12 include career exploration, formulating a plan for after high school, and then actually seeing that plan through by making specific steps in 12th grade. Caseload sizes are roughly around one counselor to 191 students, which is favorable to what's suggested by the American School Counseling Association. And it allows for counselors to really develop good relationships with students, not only in terms of post-secondary planning, but also supporting them emotionally throughout the school year. So I believe that the caseload sizes really support the availability of counselors throughout the school year, in addition to our structured programming. So as I mentioned earlier, each grade level has a theme, starting with the who am I and, you know, what do I bring to this high school experience? That's your ninth grade year. 10th grade, and I will say, there is some overlap because I'm not going to say that in ninth grade, there is no career exploration or there is no post-secondary planning. All that is part of the ninth grade year, but the primary goal is really transitioning and learning who you are as a learner and adapting to the high school and learning the differences between high school and middle school and really learning how to be successful in the high school environment. 10th grade, the focus moves towards career exploration, as I mentioned, and still developing who you are as a student because you're, you know, still a youngin' in the game. And then in junior year, students really start to develop their plans for after graduation. And we do have a seminar, a junior workshop at both schools that support that and kind of nailing down the steps to take to pursue your post-secondary plan. And then we have another workshop, senior year, that focuses on that as well. But then in senior year, students are able to actually put those plans into motion. Throughout each grade level, we use a variety of tools to support students, including Naviance. That's a big one. There's a lot of tools on there, including career exploration, personality inventories, career interest inventories. We, the bulk of the college application process and, you know, the technical pieces is done through Naviance as well. And there is a very useful college exploration tool on Naviance. And we also use tools like the College Board and then the list goes on and on. But we do primarily use Naviance in our curriculum work through the school counseling department. So just a little bit of, kind of a summary of the events that happened for students throughout the school year, starting with freshman year. This day in the life happens actually in eighth grade. So that's an opportunity for students to visit the high school, get a tour, get a feel for what's going on, get excited about the upcoming school year and really get the lay of the land. Right before the school year starts, freshman orientation happens, same idea, but now, you know, students aren't as far removed and they can really start to get pumped up about what's to come. Freshman seminar happens throughout the first semester of high school. And then in between all of that, students have opportunities to meet with counselors on an individual basis. Counselors meet with every single student for course selection, but there are other opportunities outside of that to meet with counselors as well. During the sophomore year, and I will preface this by saying, this is something I would like to kind of focus a little bit more on, getting sophomores into counselors' offices earlier on in the school year. Sophomore year is, to me, one of the more challenging years in high school just because it's, it's like you're not just starting, but you're not ending either, but you're somewhere in between. And it's kind of an interesting time. So I would like to really grow our sophomore programming. But right now, what we offer, we offer opportunities for students to meet with school counselors, either in a small group format or an individual format, just to get, you know, get to know your counselor, have your counselor get to know you through that small meeting. We also have a PSAT presentation in the fall, just to gear them up for that administration in October usually. And then we are actually just wrapping up our career workshop series tomorrow, which is a short series, three days, where students learn about what their potential career interests are through a career interest inventory. Junior year, like I mentioned before, we do have our junior workshop, which is a roughly 10-week series that focuses on post-secondary planning. They are.
Excuse my watch.
That's okay. I needed a breather. The junior workshop, again, a roughly 10-week series that focuses on post-secondary planning. And including, included in that, our weekly updates for families. And then during the senior year, we jump-start the year with individual meetings with seniors. In addition to a senior workshop at Conard and then at Hall, there's a senior day, again, working to kind of find the best of both worlds in terms of what we want to offer to our seniors. But what I've seen is really impressive and I think our structures are a blessing compared to what I've seen in other schools. So some events that families can take part in to learn more about school counseling and actually get to know school counselors include open house and curriculum night. Those are your standard events that are put on by the school. We offer family presentations. For the past couple of years, we have offered these in a virtual format, but hope to bring more in-person presentations as, you know, circumstances allow. But what I do like about the virtual format is that we can have more people attend. It might be a little bit more convenient for families to view online. And then we have the follow-up Q and As for those. And we also have the opportunity to record those presentations and post them on our website, which has been really beneficial to a lot of people. We have newsletters that are sent out by the freshman counselors. We also provide weekly updates, as I mentioned earlier, throughout our junior workshop and our senior workshop series. We've been able to offer a financial aid night. We were, we had the pleasure of hosting a representative from Wesleyan University this past October to talk about FAFSA and financial aid to our families. We recently hosted College Knowledge Night, which is a panel of admissions reps geared to talk about the admissions process from the point of view of admissions, which was really powerful and impactful. And we also had the How to Pay for College Night. So this is not an exhaustive list of family opportunities, but, you know, I do want to kind of showcase some of the larger events that we have. In addition to that, families are more than welcome to reach out to counselors to meet on an individual basis. Just a little bit about our impact. Now, this information is pulled directly from our school profile. And our school profiles use Naviance as the data mechanism to capture these numbers. So I think we have a, we have a good percentage of students, close to 90% of students pursuing a further education, whether that's four-year colleges, two-year colleges, or technical schools. And then we have a small number of students pursuing military employment. And then that other category, which can include anything from a gap year, it can include the post-secondary program through pupil services. And then some students choose to pursue a PG year. And then obviously, there are students who may have some unique circumstances where they may need to take a little bit more time to develop their plan for after high school. Just a little caveat, just to add to that, we did add a short senior exit interview to our curriculum, and those are taking place right around now. And it's a 15-minute opportunity for counselors and to learn about student plans and just kind of update that information on Naviance so we can have the most reflective data available for the public. So just to talk a little bit about the focuses for this year, because again, I am brand-new, learning about the department, learning about the district as a whole. And I, you know, I had some ideas coming in as I interviewed for the position and took it on. And I've, you know, observed a lot and I'm impressed with a lot, but I also realize that there is a lot of work to be done. So some of that work includes really building our capacity to support that capital all students. And that means that recognizing that every student has their own path and that path may or may not include a four-year college, that may include a pathway that is, you know, different from that. And we want to be able to provide opportunities and curriculum to support that. So part of that includes exposing the school counseling department to those different programs. So in addition to college tours to build knowledge around, you know, trends for where our students are applying, popular schools that students are applying to, building knowledge about other programs. So what we did in the, early in the school year, back in November, is we had a professional development opportunity to visit a few programs throughout the state. And that included, as Nun took Community College, as well as Job Corps, which is a training program. So there were obviously some counselors that went off to learn more about four-year colleges, but we, I made it a point to include some of those other additional opportunities as well. We had the opportunity to attend two college board conferences, the Dream Differed Conference, which focuses on college access and opportunities for Black and African-American students, which was very powerful, great experience. We were able to bring two counselors from each side of town, so in addition to myself. Ann, Paul, and Ann, and Rosina were also there. And it was a wonderful experience and really the takeaways from that was, you know, how can we as a department work to better serve our students? And one thing that really stuck out to me and the counselors was the importance of mentorship opportunities. And this is something that I, you know, I have personal experience with in my previous district and hope to include some opportunities related to mentorship in the future in West Hartford. The Proparate Conference, similarly, is another college board conference that I was able to attend along with a few counselors. So we brought three counselors there and Ann and Rosina were there as well. Same kind of focus, but only this was for the Latinx community. So access and opportunity for those students. We are in the process of enhancing our knowledge as a whole for the department with Naviance because one of the first things I recognize as I took on the role is that we have this great program, but we are certainly in need of some formalized training from the experts in terms of how to use it to its full capacity. So we are in the process of getting some training regarding that and really trying to improve ways to incorporate data collection in Naviance, as well as Google, because I realize that they're, you know, they're both good tools, but we want to be able to use both of them. We've had professional learning opportunities to have some real candid discussions about problems of practice in our, in our own department. And I hope to continue those discussions. And as I mentioned before, we hosted our financial aid night. And I hope to build on that to include more FAFSA completion events because I realize that that application is, although becoming easier, it's still a cumbersome process for a lot of families and can be made a lot easier if we kind of get everyone at the table at the same time. Another focus that I've been focused on, I guess I could have said that better, but partnering with community organizations has also been a beneficial aspect of school counseling this year. So we've been able to partner with a variety of community organizations to host, for example, a college application boot camp. And I am in the process of working with a couple of parent volunteers who really want to support students with the college essay process. So those are things that are up and coming. And I really hope to increase, excuse me, increase those opportunities, increase alumni involvement. I think students value hearing from students who have actually been through this closer to the time that they are, just to learn about their experience, what they're experiencing post-graduation. I really want to improve our collaboration with other departments, especially after hearing some of the comments today. I think we can improve our collaboration with our special ed department, our English learners department, as well as every, you know, more collaboration with teachers. I think we, we can use some improvement with collaboration overall with multiple stakeholders in our schools. And then also, the last kind of thing that I want to hope to build in the future is increased programming for the grade eight to nine transition. That is something that we're working on at Hall right now. There's a new event that's happening soon called Meet Your Hall Family, which will give an opportunity for parents to, to talk to, meet in small groups about important transition-related issues when it comes to welcoming your student into high school. And hopefully, in the future, we bring that to Conard. But we are piloting it at Hall this year. And I can't take credit because it was not my brainchild, but I'm happy to support and we do have school counselors supporting that as well. And I hope that wasn't too long, but.
So you can see why we're impressed with Melanie in terms of the volume of the work and her quick ability to be able to really kind of chair this and steward it in the right direction. So we open this up to your questions and discussion at this point.
Thank you so much. And before questions, want to formally also welcome you, Melanie.
And before questions, want to formally also welcome you, Melanie. Thank you so much. Glad to have you here. Teammates, questions for what has been shared? Comments? Ethan?
I did have one question, and this may be, I'm not sure how to do it. But have you ever looked, or is there a process that you could do, sort of an after-action type of thing, to look at kids where they go to college, what they're successful and what they're not, and sort of look back and say, okay, you know, the kids who went into computer science did very well, the kids who went into French, I make it up, you know, you know, things that, then that would say, hey, are there things we're doing? I don't know. It was just, as you're reading, you know, reading it. I'm just trying to think, how do we learn from where we're successful and where we're not?
Very interesting question. I don't know that we have the data saved on a programmatic level in terms of where, what the majors are that students choose. Although, one of the reports that we will give to the board, I believe it's the second board meeting in May, pending the release of what's called the Profile and Performance Report, the PPR. This is a state-generated report where they will look at, through data captured from the National Clearinghouse, they'll look at the formal college acceptance rates that have been reported through that mechanism in addition to something called a college persistence rate, which is the percentage of students who entered in a given year, say, in their, you know, freshman year of college, who returned for their sophomore year, which is what I'm sort of hearing in your question. I know that if you dig into larger reports that are available on college persistence, you can begin to break things down, but I don't know that we have a sophisticated method here in the district where we've been able to do that based on what students have declared as majors. And it's often difficult, because you may not declare your major for two years. But that PPR report is coming. The data that's typically reported on that college front is usually, I believe it's two years behind.
Yeah, it's two years behind. And that's the issue, is that we rely on the National Clearinghouse for the data. And so the majors, the list of majors, I get your question. We've tried to figure out ways to do this, getting surveys from students as they leave. When we were at Connerd back 15 years ago, we tried to get this and have students, as they come back, report back to us. But you're kind of reliant on them to do it. And then the Clearinghouse information, the issue is, UConn has trouble getting that information just because of the shifting of majors within that same university. So we kind of have it on a macro level, but it's hard to do it by school or by subject.
The one thing that sort of triggered with Paul's answer is, it always surprises me when, and I'm a layman, so if I'm misstating it, is it seems like a lot of kids go to college but drop out. And that always really, it's just a terrible, you know.
Yeah, our persistence rate's really good here.
Is it good?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, be interesting now. Thank you.
Gail, or did you have your hand? Gail and then Claire.
Thanks for the presentation. It was really interesting. I had actually just two simple questions. One is, both in Connerd and Hall, you have a, like, at Hall, you have an 8% other rate. What are those people doing? Because you have employment, you know, separately, so.
Right. So we are working on improving, you know, the options in terms of what is reportable on Naviance, because there are canned responses that don't allow us to elaborate on other plans. So as I mentioned in the presentation, that can include a gap year program. That can include a PG program, so a post-grad year in between high school and going to college. Some students take an additional year, primarily like to improve on athletics is usually that, what students do for that. And then in addition to that, there's the post-secondary program through pupil services. So those are students who are in the special ed program who move on to that additional year before officially leaving the public school format. So that's what, and then, like I said, inevitably, some of that other includes students who are truly taking some time off to, you know, whether it's they need to address the mental health things, or maybe they have another, maybe they're leaving the country, maybe they're traveling. But there's just not a way to capture that data in Naviance. And that's why we want to get that formalized training, just so we know that we're using Naviance in its true intention and able to report data that is truly reflective of the student body.
Thanks. Then my second question was, you know, there's a lot of talk about college and college preparation and that type of stuff. But I just, and maybe you said this, but if you could just reiterate, like, with technical schools, where there's, you know, tremendous job opportunities now, you know, all kinds of jobs out there that there's nobody to do, no skills. And then you have people going to college who come out of college and don't, can't get a job. So I'm just curious if there's any, you know, resources or push towards any people going towards the technical realm.
Absolutely. I agree. There is a big push for, you know, four-year colleges, but I do truly know and believe that there are opportunities outside of that. And it's something that we need to work more into our school counseling curriculum. But there are opportunities to have those discussions. And also, one other thing that I did not mention was the opportunity to go to the, oh my God, I'm forgetting the name of the, name of the event. But there was a fair at the casino that focused on what you're talking about, the trade programs and those opportunities that are outside of the four-year college realm. And, you know, I have my opinions about the event itself. It was the first time it was held. But I do think it's a valuable experience for students, no matter what your plan is, to learn those options. And I was happy that we were able to bring a group of students out to that fair. But in addition to that, we do have representatives from different trade programs who come to visit our high schools throughout the fall to talk about those options. And students are welcome to attend those events. I believe every student is welcome, no matter what the grade level, to attend those sessions.
Piggyback a couple of other ideas that happen, operate outside of necessarily Melanie's purview. So Brian Cohen's our Career and Technical Education Department Supervisor. And through his work and his staff, they will bring in speakers who focus on college and career. They do coordination with the career counseling staff, the two, you know, the individual members that are aligned with the school counseling department that work in our career centers. We also have a new person, a teacher, Mary Ann Taft, who splits her time between our Reach, our alternative high school, and working with job placement, job shadowing. And I know that she just brought a mobile, help me with the name of it.
A mobile, it's Goodwin College, Goodwin University's mobile lab that focuses on advanced manufacturing. That was just at both high schools in the last, just the week before we went on vacation. So the classes went out. We're able to go into this mobile lab, which just made it very nice. So there is that aspect from Brian's work that connects very well to the community colleges. And I know Melanie's had this push to also go to Asnuntuk, and, which has a great advanced manufacturing lab. And we've also talked about Lincoln Tech and other schools as well.
Thank you.
Andrew?
I know you mentioned times when the people who work in admissions staff at four-year, and I'm not sure, maybe two-year colleges, come and talk to students and like their parents. I think I went to one, actually. But I'm curious, do, is there like any process where admissions officers maybe come and talk to counselors or teachers about, I mean, for the counselors, it'd be more supporting students through like the application process. And then maybe even for teachers, I think I've heard some schools use it as like an opportunity to help teachers write better letters of recommendation or however they would support a student through that process in the classroom.
Yes, definitely. So the piece about the letters of recommendation, that actually has happened in the past. It was before my time, but.
Last year, the admissions representative from Yale, Holy Cross, and UConn, I believe, met with different staff members doing professional development with that.
Yes. So, and that's something I hope to, you know, reinstate in the future. And the idea of admissions counselors coming to talk to counselors is absolutely something that's pretty much ongoing, because we're in regular conversations with admissions staff throughout the application process and constantly learning, constantly visiting colleges and learning, you know, what's new and, you know, what's appropriate in terms of, you know, their processes. But every college is different, but it's an ongoing learning opportunity. So the short answer to your question is yes, and yes.
Pardon the oversight, Claire. Claire and then Avery.
So I have just a couple of quick questions. Post-secondary, do your counselors within the high school continue to work in the Up to 22 program?
So that is with the Pupil Services Department, so.
It's a separate, it's a separate form of counseling, because it's more of the job shadowing counseling. And so it's just not under that department. It's under the Pupil Services Department.
But those kids at Pupil Services do get services of the counselors within the high schools, correct?
Sure. They have access to them, and they're part of a caseload. So it depends on that student and what their needs would be, whether the best way to access that is through Pupil Services or through the regular department as it goes through, but absolutely.
Okay. And then for course selection of eighth graders, are they meeting the counselors from the high school? Or do they do course selection with their middle school counselors?
Great question. So it's a combination of both. So the high school counselors go down to each middle school to present about the program of studies and the timeline as it relates to course selection. And then they meet with their middle school counselors, either in a group format or individually, to actually nail down that course selection in our system, so both.
Okay. And the last quick one. Do you have military, people with military background or anyone from the military that can come into the high school to present to kids interested in that path?
Absolutely. And we have, one of our counselors is a military guy. And we do regularly have military representatives come and visit the high school to talk to students, along with the college reps and trade school reps.
And our assistant superintendent.
I was gonna say, we've got several teachers in the district. I'm always asking if there's a need someone to talk to, you know, but we have many teachers that are, that have, you know, military service that also are more than happy to speak to students if they have interest. And, you know, the difference, we're not recruiters, we're not trying to sell anything. We can have honest and open conversations. It's one of my favorite things to do.
Avery?
So forgive me if this question is a little poorly stated. I'm trying to figure out exactly how to ask it. But with West Hartford being named one of the, I think, Mr. Moore, you said, one of the best towns for music education. I'm wondering what sorts of guides and resources or counselors given to then-guide students who are looking into the conservatory path and other sorts of more specialized for your college programs?
That's a great question.
It's, that's, this is something we've talked a little bit about in the future, of how do we align? Because you can look at this in terms of specialties, in terms of the department with, so sports, for example. Who are the school counselors that are best liaisons with sports? And have that exposure, because we do have counselors of both schools that were college athletes. It's the same area with music. So as we go forward, and so this year, we've had, we've had counselors visiting different colleges across the country and becoming kind of the experts by region is kind of one of the models that we've looked at. And that's kind of folded into that, that who's going to be the school counselor that really knows about Berkeley? Who's going to be the school counselor that really knows about Rhode Island School of Design? And those kind of fields where, even if that's not your counselor, your counselor can say, let me talk to this counselor who's kind of, that's their specialty area. So it's an area that we haven't been where we want to be, but we do have it as kind of our overall plan.
And I was just going to add that, as Melanie said, the liaison with other departments. For instance, our music teachers have great access to which schools. You know, those are very specialized programs, as you said. You know, they're conservatory-like programs. And our music department is quite knowledgeable. So liaising and, as Melanie said, that would be a goal to add to, because Mr. Bowles and Mr. Urick and all of these great music teachers have the experience. They have placed, helped students get placed in programs that take maybe 10 students in the whole country. And it happens regularly. I can name children right now who are going to amazing programs. And a lot of it is their music teacher's background. But when we can coordinate with counseling, I think that will make us even stronger.
Andrew and then Deb. Oh, okay, all right, Deb.
Thank you. And welcome. It's nice to see you here at the board level and appreciate your presentation. You made reference to our policy where we have special counselors for ninth graders, different from the 10th through 12th graders. And I'm pretty sure that that policy is fairly new within the last like three years or so. And I think you said, like, some people like it, some people don't like it. I'm wondering how we will assess whether that is a successful model? If we plan to assess, I hope we plan to assess whether it's a successful model, and how we plan to do that, whether it's a survey of families or students or just kind of seeing how things go? Do you have any thoughts on how we might look at what we're doing and determine whether we want to continue that way?
I was just going to say, I think that's a great, a great question. I think it's been around a few more years than that, maybe five or six anyway. And I think it's a good time to maybe take a look at it. So I think it's a good question, but I don't know if we've had formal conversations yet on how to start that. But I know, Melanie, maybe you have some thoughts on it?
No, I was just going to echo exactly what you just said. I know that it has been a conversation point. And like I said earlier, I believe there's pros and cons to both sides. Unfortunately, I only have experience with this type of model, because it was that way in Manchester. And then the only other experience I have was through my internship in East Hartford, where they had two counselors per grade level. And, you know, there's pros and cons to that as well. But one thing that I'm consistently thinking of is the importance of the freshman transition. And, and not to say that grades 10 and 11 aren't important, but the transition for ninth grade and then the successful transition out of high school for 12th grade are two very important and competing demands, especially in the beginning of the school year. So I would be curious to see what the, you know, what the information tells us if, when, once we do start to explore that. And I do think it's worth exploring, because what I, I don't know what I don't know. But yeah, I think, I definitely think we can work to do that in the future.
And I just apologize. I want to chime in, because I was present when we made this transition in our programming. And I would say it's a programming, not a policy, just to, you know, because I think that's an important distinction. The rationale at the time that was presented was that our ninth graders were really being underserviced. And I think it was, you know, maybe two or three years in, we started to hear from our 10th grade parents that, you know, that transition sort of shifted. And I won't say that the 10th graders were being underserviced at that point, but it's a new face, and you haven't had that year of relationship. So it was kind of like a starting over again. And we did have it on our, you know, we had it in our larger plans that we would probably be reviewing this program after it was able to get some feet, maybe four years in. And of course, COVID's happened, and we've been in a two-year stall. I do have, I do think that, you know, relative to some of the specifics that you asked, that surveying is an important component of that, of the various stakeholders. But we have other measures. And one of the, you know, I was talking, mentioning the Profile and Performance Report, the PPR. Another important statistic that's captured and that's measured for all schools is the ninth grade, I'm gonna lose the specific that they call it, but it's essentially the percent, go ahead, help me.
It's kind of like an on-track for graduation.
Thank you. That's exactly what it's called, the on-track for graduation.
Okay, got it. Exactly. But it is an on-track for graduation measure that says, you know, the ninth grade year is crucial in all the literature for graduation and for on-track. So you want to make sure your ninth graders receive at least, and this was at least five credits, and that they are moving on through the process. Because when they get stuck there, it often really either delays or, you know, can really derail a child's experience. So that on-track for graduation PPR. child's experience. So that on-track for graduation, PPR, uh,
Metric.
metric is, is, is one we, had, we've been very successful with it. That was, that's one we would have to make sure we don't compromise if we change them up.
And the five-credit requirement and then, you know, it's a research-based statistic, as Anne mentions, takes on even greater weight when you consider that since they've started that metric, they've, they've changed the graduation requirements in the state and up them from, from what used to be, uh, at the state level, 21 to 25.
Other question. Jason.
Thank you. Um, Melanie, thank you so much for this presentation. Um, I did not have this experience in high school. Um, and, you know, I graduated high school with a D minus and, um, basically counted as a failure that there wasn't a future. Um, so I'm wondering, what's the experience like for students like me in, in our schools? Um, you know, how, seeing the, the plan that you have for, for the students and developing the plan in the junior year and how to execute that plan, um, is essential. Um, and I think, you know, your approach to continuous improvement, to going to conferences and finding out ways to address underrepresented students, I think is, um, is amazing. And just want to hear more about what someone like me would have, would experience in the schools.
Um, I appreciate your comment and, you know, I would love to say that our program reaches e- each and every student, but I, and I, but I know that there are some students that still, um, get a little lost and that, and, and that's not their fault. Um, and that really leads me and drives me to seek that continuous improvement that you mentioned. Um, and part of that includes more of a consistent message, not only from school counseling, but from the school as a whole, um, and the district as a whole. Um, everyone has to be on the same page. Um, if I were to, if, if I could tell a little story actually happened today, um, I was in some classrooms helping with the 10th grade career exploration lesson. Um, and, you know, we tried a little something new, used a new inventory and Naviance. Um, and right off the bat, I'm like, okay, we need to change this. We need to change that i- in my mind, right? Because I think it's great, but I know it can be better. Um, and what really drove that home for me was a comment that a student made in one of the classes that I was in today and we were doing, um, he was doing the inventory, wasn't really into it, you know, kind of going through the motions. Um, and one of our school counseling interns asked him, hey, what are you, you know, what are you thinking of doing after high school? And I'm standing near this conversation and overhearing it. And he said, nothing, like, I'm not gonna do anything, right? So my ears perked up right away. I'm kind of listening in on this conversation. So I go on my computer on the side just to look him up because I was able to get his name and looked up his information and, um, looked at his grades, looked at his Naviance account. Um, and he had since gone to the bathroom. So when he came back, I pulled him aside. I said, hey, what's going on? I heard you say you don't want to do anything after high school? Is that really, is that really true? So he started to open up about how he, he's just kind of struggling a little bit. But I made sure to mention to him that I saw improvement from the first semester to the second semester and really kind of drew out what his, you know, thought process was in terms of saying, I don't want to do anything. And turns out he does have interests, right? And I tell that story to say that I, I want all counselors to take that approach. Um, there's a reason why I'm in this role, but I realize that everyone is not me and I, everyone doesn't take the same approach as me. But I want to be able to empower counselors to have more conversations because that's really what it boils down to. Like, it's not about checking boxes and getting this done because I have to and I have to show the data. It's, yeah, I have to get this done, but it has to be meaningful for every student, especially for students who, and I don't want to say you were lost in the sauce in high school because you might, you might have, you know, things happen and, and, and that, and it looks like you're really successful now. Um, but like those conversations changed people. And I really hope to follow up with this student just to see, you know, what happens because one, one person taking that interest, and that's not to say no one else has taken interest in this student, but I could have easily chose to just say, oh, here we go, another student who's not thinking about their post-secondary or they're not invested or they're not this. It's taking the extra step just to pick students' brains. And I think that's really important and our programming needs to allow for time for that to happen.
And I want to add one thing, if I may. Um, I think Melanie has captured the importance and the power of the personalized approach. It's something that we've talked about, you know, it's something, um, when I worked with Tom at Connerd, it was, it was the mantra of the building in terms of developing those personal relationships with kids. And that is absolutely the number one, uh, tool that we have, and that's the charge for, for our counselors. But, um, I think Melanie's point that, you know, being very candid, that, that potential exists, um, all the time. But it, it makes me reflect on other structures we have because what happens is especially in big comprehensive high schools like we have, it's very easy for an individual to become lost. And so we do have not just the support of the structure of school counseling or the teacher relationships. You know, we think about the REACH program, think about, uh, to dropout prevention. It's intended specifically to be the smaller, more personalized setting for students who may lose their way, who may not be finding academic success, not because of, you know, any real issue with their ability to learn, but, but perhaps their ability to find connection in that large group. Um, and they thrive in that setting. Uh, that exists, you know, with Strive, that exists with, um, opportunities that we can take to, um, you know, blend the students' day as they get further along and look at job shadowing opportunities. Figuring out the hook for each and every child, what, what is your real interest? You know, I really heard that story coming out from Melanie as to getting down to being able to figure out what is it that this student is looking for? And I, if it was Gail's question, it doesn't always need to be, uh, the four-year college. Um, and that's why we're, we're really trying to invest in these other opportunities to make sure that we have a comprehensive approach, uh, so that we can, um, provide opportunities for all kids.
I just want to say I am so excited for our school counseling department with you at the, at the wheel. Um, I just wanted to speak to, I mean, I think the presentation and then even that story. Um, I think your genuineness, your passion, um, and your, you know, real desire to implement change within the school was very apparent. So I'm, I'm super excited and I'm so glad that you're here with us. Um, I just wanted to comment similarly, um, from, from what Jason was saying, I'm really excited about kind of the initiatives with, um, kind of more community involvement, including mentoring, um, looking at alternate paths to post-secondary plans, um, and then that alumni engagement. I think, you know, that whole piece, um, I think it, it, it offers, you know, I, I know that a lot of the important work happens in Naviance and in the counseling, um, department, but I think these are opportunities that can also help those students that aren't quite sure what they want to do. Um, and mentoring, um, or speaking to an alumni, those are things that really, um, I think can have some meaningful impact for a lot of students who are still undecided or confused. So, um, I just, I'm, I'm super excited for, for our counseling department.
Thank you. So am I.
Other question. Jason.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I really appreciate the story. Uh, I was gonna follow up with a question about high-needs students, but I think what you've expressed is the personalized approach and the ability to, um, to determine those different avenues, um, to reach every student. Appreciate that. So, uh, two questions and I'll ask them together. And so, um, one is, um, is there different forms of counseling for student athletes? Um, I say this because I see a lot of student athletes struggling at UConn. Um, that there's excitement about their performance and we care about sports in West Hartford. Uh, and their performance often drives their, their choices. Uh, but then when it comes to academics, uh, that can present a challenge that they didn't foresee. And so I, I, I see the struggles that, that student athletes at UConn are, are faced with. And so I, I'm a, I'm compelled to, to think through that here. Um, and the other is, uh, that, to ask you whether there's a prevalence of students choosing a gap year because of, um, the notion that many colleges don't have the in-person experience right now or have a limited engagement, um, uh, because of COVID restrictions, et cetera. Um, so I've just heard of, you know, anecdotal evidence of students, uh, you know, deferring plans, uh, for college and, and taking a step back. And, and just if there's conversation around those kinds of concerns, whether there's like a window of opportunity or, um, or what kind of, you know, um, thought process goes into helping them evaluate those, those choices. So those are the two.
So I'll start with the athlete, um, question. So I, the athletics piece has always been something that, I don't want to use the word mind-boggling, but it, it is a process. Um, and I know their process is different, um, from the traditional student who's not pursuing, um, college athletics. Um, there isn't a separate process for them in terms of the school counseling, um, aspect. However, conversations about s- being a student first is absolutely part of the discussion when it comes to, you know, the college application process for athletes because we realize that, you know, sports are important, they're exciting, but, you know, there's always that chance. What if you get injured? What's your backup plan? How are you gonna continue? Um, what are you gonna do after? Because the percentages of getting into, you know, the big leagues and, you know, being a professional athlete, those percentages are so small that you have to have a realistic plan in terms of what you want to study in addition to being a college athlete. So, um, it, that's another piece that I want to look to improve, especially in terms of like just the knowledge around that whole world. It'd be really nice to bring in a representative from a college to kind of speak to that. Like, um, Andrew mentioned earlier, bringing in college reps to talk to counselors about, you know, how to really coach, um, for lack of a better word, students into that world. Um, so definitely a growth area. Um, but, but the conversations are happening and I hope that answers your question. I don't know if Paul or Anne have any.
I, I was only gonna piggyback, um, just in, this is a recollection and I'm, and I'm honestly not fresh on it for what's current practice, but obviously eligibility for, for sports, for athletes does depend on their performance. So I know a lot of our coaches would coordinate for academic study halls and things like that. And I don't know if that's still a practice, but I would imagine, um, that that's a piece. But I think, I think Melanie's answer kind of goes more at the heart of your question as to our, our counselors having those tough conversations with kids to make sure that they're not being myopic in their, in their preparation and, and that they are kind of looking at the bigger picture if, if their intent is both college and athletics.
Can you repeat the second question again? I'm sorry.
The, the choice of a gap year due to COVID in higher ed.
I think there's a combination of things going on. Um, COVID is certainly a player. Um, I don't have like data to support it right now, but I'm, I'm, I know the idea of being in a virtual classroom for $80,000 a year is probably not really appealing to a lot of students. Um, but I also, and these are all like my own personal opinion, so I'm just gonna preface it with that. I also think, um, students may be a little apprehensive because of how, how much it costs. It's so expensive. Um, and part of our job as a school counseling department is to have those conversation with, conversations with students and families earlier on to understand all of what the college application and research process entails. And part of that is when you, you know, when you develop a list of schools, and we always talk about reach, target, safety, or, you know, that, something like that. Um, reach, target and safety applies to the dollar amount too. Um, and that's something that I don't see happening as often when it comes to talking about college. Um, because students will set their sights on these, these great schools. They get accepted and then they have to have the hard conversation with whoever's at home, like, how are we gonna pay for this? Oh, um, you didn't apply for that scholarship? You didn't get any merit aid? Yeah, you're, you're not going, right? And that's a harsh reality for a lot of people. And I think it ultimately leads to some of those decisions to like re, reconfigure a plan. But again, that's like my own, what I've seen, um, in my own experience working directly with students. Um, so it's, it's definitely a goal to incorporate a little bit more of that in the discussion when it comes to college planning, um, in addition to, um, really talking more about financial aid resources because that's another piece that I, I see as a growth area in our department.
Thank you.
I was gonna add a, a brief comment, um, to maybe help fill that out. Um, last year, I think at our State of Schools report, we did see a little bit of a change. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I see Tom shaking his head too. I recall presenting to, to the board that we'd seen a little, uh, change in more in-state students and a little bit fewer in private out-of-state. And those might be the most, some of the most expensive, not all. We have plenty of expensive private in-state here, but we had seen a little dip in, uh, private out-of-state and a little increase in, uh, public and private in-state. And although I don't have the numbers, we, we at the time thought that might be a COVID fact, that why go as far away if you might be coming home and why spend as much if you may be coming home to your lovely West Hartford house to take your classes? So, um, I just would add that is something I think we saw in our graduation day.
And I was just gonna add one tiny thing that there was a report, I can't remember if it was a state or a national level report, that came out sometime in the winter that I read that talked about the impact of, uh, specifically college attendance, uh, as a result of COVID throughout the pandemic. And I know there was a s- a fairly substantial dip, uh, overall in, in, in the, in the larger trend. It was, I make up a number, but it was somewhere 2%, 3%, 4% difference. Um, I would have to refresh myself. I have it on my computer somewhere.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? All right. Melanie, again, thank you so very much. I do want to comment and it has been shared and I echo all that has been said. Very much appreciate and, uh, respect your energy and your personalized nature of meeting every student where they are at. You emphasized how you want to reach and connect with all students and hearing you say that, um, is believable. And I think it's important that no matter how many skillsets, how much educational background a person can have, to have that personal sense of recognizing the potential that every young person has and tapping into that potential and helping them go in whatever direction they desire to go into. Kudos to you for helping our young people do that. So thank you very much. We look forward to more to come. Paul, of course, Anne, of course, thank you so much for your never-ending support as well. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to routine matters. We now will have our financial report. Approval of the financial report for the period ending February 28th, 2022. And we have Ms. Liz Hewitt coming to the table. Thank you so much. And I believe this evening Ethan is going to be giving us the financial report.
Set. Okay. The, uh, school funds are reported in four categories. First category being the general fund report, which was budgeted for fiscal year '22 at 176.3 million. Second category is the state and federal grants fund. At this point, the school system has $21.9 million of funds and some of that funding covers multiple years. and some of that funding covers multiple years, both prior and future. Then the third category is the special funds report, which covers six different funds. And the fourth category is the nutrition service funds. As of the February 2022 financials, the general fund report projections are projecting a positive overall full-year variance of $25,000. While positive, the variance for the full fiscal year has gone from a positive variance of $95,000 at the end of December to a positive projected variance of $25,000, a negative change of $70,000 in that two-month time period. And it is positive, but it is just a boat break even. As with the December projections, there was a trade-off in accounts, with the variance in the total salary lines being a positive $1.5 million-plus projection and purchase services projection having a negative variance of almost the same amount. The projected variances of each of the line items decreased, I'm sorry, increased from the December projection, so the variance has increased in both cases. The positive variance in salaries was a combination of open positions and an increase in the percentage of recent teacher hires as part of the teacher mix. Not naturally, but teachers are paid, recent teachers are paid less than, more experience. The negative variance in the purchase services was a function of the school system needing to hire more special education support from outside services. In terms of, that's what I had in general funds. In terms of the state and federal grants, there's over $9.2 million in outstanding funds or available funds. Over $8.5 million of those funds are concentrated in the two large ESER grants that are still outstanding. And then in terms of the special funds, the six different funds are projected to end the June fiscal year with a $2.1 million balance, which is pretty equivalent to last year, just over $50,000 plus from the prior year balance in June. And the year-over-year change in each of the balance funds was relatively minimal. And then the last one is the nutrition service fund, where there was a significant increase in the fund balance from last year, at this time, or February of last year, 2021, when it was basically a break even, to a balance at the end of the fiscal 20-year, 2-year of $1.6 million. And as been discussed in prior sessions, the fund is generating more income than pre-pandemic period, as all students are currently fed free of charge till the end of this current fiscal year. That's what I had. And I guess we just keep waiting to see the variance, and hopefully they stay above zero.
Yes, they will be refined as the year goes, and we will continue to report monthly. But happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ethan. Teammates, questions, comments regarding our fiscal report? All right. Well, with that hearing, now seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the period ending February 28, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting from April 5, 2022. Seeking a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Thank you so much. Information and reports. Any board members have any communication and reports to share? All right, other information and discussions. There is one brief thing I do just want to mention, and what triggered it certainly was our robust discussion and hearing the counseling update. And as we know, as a collective body of board members, this volunteer opportunity that we are so honored to have the honor of fulfilling. We come from different backgrounds and different levels of expertise and pieces that we contribute to the discussion. And one of our teammates here made reference to graduating from high school with a D minus. And I appreciate that level of disclosure and sharing and realness. And what prompts me to single you out in saying that, Jason, is just wanting to acknowledge a recent recognition you received from the University of Connecticut, rather, where you were nominated and voted by the students to receive the recognition of excellence in terms of mentoring. I apologize for not getting the correct name of it, but receiving an award by the student body for your contributions in mentoring undergraduate students. And so, again, hearing where you were, hearing where you are now, you are a testament of purpose, of change, and how there certainly is ongoing evolution. So just want to congratulate you in that regard. All right, any other comments, updates? All right, we'll move on now to non-staff communications and reports. Did that already? Now, future business. Students, I apologize. I think my bedtime has passed as well. So pardon me, our student representatives. Absolutely, we will begin with Avery. Thank you.
I know that it's late, so I'm going to try to keep it short and sweet. But I've actually wanted to highlight something that I've been noticing around the school and over the past few weeks that I think is really remarkable. The Student Faculty Committee, that's the organization of students who meet bi-weekly with Ms. Ambrose, one of our assistant principals. Oh, gosh, I'm mixing up. That's the night speaking. And faculty members, they meet and they talk about how they want to improve the school environment and to just make school life better for everyone. And recently, a subcommittee has been making motivational and encouraging announcements every morning. So some Hall students, Derek Williams and Merrick Huey White and Meredith Norton, have been presenting uplifting messages, encouraging students in whatever their efforts may be, which I thought was just really touching. In addition to Ethan Striff Cave's $20,000 Voice for Change Award for the Outdoor Wellness Project. So we just have a lot of really awesome student initiatives going on right now to improve our school life. Returning from break, our spring sports athletes have been continuing their training even through the time off. And in soccer, Nikki Delores and Toby Ruffo received Allstate and Academic Allstate honors in the Connecticut Soccer Coaches Association Annual Awards Banquet and the Connecticut Soccer Coaches Girls Association Annual Awards Banquet. And Lucas Almeida was named the Connecticut Player of the Year with Allstate, All-New England, and All-American honors. And Nicholas, I apologize, I might be mispronouncing his name, Hermes, was Hall's first champion of the Kingswood-Oxford Tennis Invitational Singles in 15 years. And then, coming up, we'll be having Chris Heron, a former NBA player, to speak to Hall students about personal values, identity, and making healthy choices. This opportunity is being provided by the West Hartford Community of Concern and the Heron Project to educate students on substance use and the dangers associated with that. Heron will be sharing his personal struggles and how he came out of it.
Thank you, Avery. Andrew.
I'll just highlight a few things that have been happening. First, like students at Hall returning from break, we're now in the full swing of spring sports. So teams are practicing, games are going on all week, a full slate. Also, back before break, the week right before April spring break, the Specialized Performance Study Group, which is Connord's advanced acting class, they had a day where they each chose a fictional character and portrayed that fictional character and stayed in their role for the entire day. And students from all grades visited and were able to interact with them. I went with my English class. It was definitely very interesting and eclectic, mix from El Woods to Frog and Toad and everything in between. Also, Connord's esports team has been very successful. Out of 33 teams, the Smash Bros., Super Smash Bros. team placed first. And out of 17, the League of Legends team placed sixth. So both of those now move on to the playoffs, which start Friday and go through next week. Also, as Mr. Moore brought up, and Avery mentioned at Hall, we had a Voice for Change proposal that was successful, and that was led by a junior, Jeff Rosborg, who's also our vice president of student council. And I encourage you to read about it. I'm sure it's in some newspaper. Definitely the Connord Current will have to cover it. But he has sweeping plans. There's a garden, there's funding for sports, funding for music and art. So it's definitely really, everyone does win as his plan states. And finally, I'll mention that Connord is also having Chris Heron come on the 26th, which I mentioned at last meeting, and everyone is very excited. And he's, I think, speaking to the parents at Town Hall, if I'm not mistaken, the night prior. So if parents want to come, you can see Chris Heron as well.
Thank you, Andrew. And again, thank you both so much for those updates. And now, moving on to future business. And with that, we have announcement of future meeting dates. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, May 3, 2022, our regular Board of Education meeting at 7:00 here in this room, 314, followed by Tuesday, May 17, 2022, regular Board of Education meeting, 7:00 here in this room, 314. And then lastly, Tuesday, June 7, 2022, regular Board of Education meeting, 7:00 here in the Legislative Chamber, room 314. Do we have a request for a future agenda item? Right? Comments from visitors? Do we have any visitors here to make comments? We know that there were some from the list before. We had exceeded our time for the subject matter of SEL, so do just want to honor those persons who I said we would go back to or they would have the opportunity at the end of the meeting. So if Kate Capes is here, Gina Morris. All right, anyone else here to make a comment? All right, seeing none, hearing none. We have an executive session. The executive session is pursuant to Section 1-206B of the General Statutes to discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to pending litigation to witness Matthew Rowe versus West Hartford Board of Education and Town of West Hartford, docket number CV225072310. Seeking a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Do you need to head out?
She said it's okay.